I called the Oregon City Council in May 12, 2018. Today's going to be a budget workshop for council, so just remind everybody that this is a non-public hearing on comments section. So it'll be city council discussing budget items between city staff and council members. With that said, I'll tell you that what I want to accomplish today is look at the revenues real quick, see if there's any risk of agreement of my items up or down, so we can get past the intake of revenues. And then talk about some big items, one being the jail discussion. I think we got a couple of folks from the sheriff's department here. I want to talk about that. I think that's a good news item. We've got some inmate housing programs being looked at to go to work release. That's potentially going to save the city quite a bit of money, so we want to talk about that. And contingency, we got to put together to make sure they've got the funds they need noted to use the jail acts and do the things needed for that program. So we want to talk about that. Definitely talk about the schools some more, but I think when I go through the budget each department, I notice that there are some items in each department that we want to at least address again. We talked a lot about must haves versus like to haves, overtime, travel, things that aren't really necessary that we've got to really look at hard to really need to budget for those items. And I'll just tell you where my mind's at, and I think Randy knows this, we've talked multiple times, so council knows. My mind is the actual amount in 2016-17. That's the only actual expenditures that we know sit in here, right? We still have to close this year out, so that's really only nine months to 15 months of rearview mirrors. So those actuals, in my opinion, we need to try to manage to those as close as we can. We need to manage to what we were doing back in 2016-17, because we were able to manage the city, we were able to get through the operating tasks with those funds, and that's what we need to talk about. Again, this is not a punitive session, but the budget is getting tougher as we go forward, so we're looking really close at every dollar, and everybody needs to understand that. So we don't have any sidestepping we can do on dollars. Some might think that we're taking dollars and putting it aside in contingency funds, and it's absolutely true, because we've got some big expenses ahead of us that we've got to make sure we can handle when they get here. So with that said, city council wants to comment.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, thank you for your comments. Tuesday night at Gene High School, an opportunity to listen to, I would use the word advocates, a lot of advocates for the school system. An opportunity actually, reading editorials from the Hillary, which I try to stray from, but I actually kind of agree with the editorial staff at Hillary regarding the schools. You know, thoughts, or thoughts, prayerful thoughts lead to good decisions and choices. And in my prayerful thoughts, I had an opportunity, by the way, to speak to Randy Alvis, who I think is a fine spokesman for the school system. I also think Mr. Alvis is an advocate for children. And I remember in the Bible, Jesus says he brought the children unto him. He wouldn't live in some of our schools. He wouldn't ask them to come into some of our schools. And that tells me that this school system deserves $300,000 or whatever and not. We have to figure out a way. From my perspective, this is my first comment, we have to find out a way to try and help the school system get its school. That's my first thought, and I will pose any budget that doesn't include that money. Let me say that first thought. Secondly, the teachers, this concerns me, they could be asked for, I don't know if it's been appropriated or not, a 2% pay raise plus step. Well, that is one branch of our city employees. The other night at the city public hearing, the gentleman, I can't remember his last name, but he ran as a writing candidate, got 300 votes, and I, you know, I thought he was extremely articulate. And he said that jobs located in areas for two or three different reasons, schools, but safety and health of the citizenry. Well, if teachers get a 2% increase, then I submit that they are no different. If we're going to actually meet the criteria of what we're supposed, our mission is as a city, then I submit to everyone here, in particular to the members of this council, that some sort of bonus or some sort of reward needs to go to our other public employees. I'm not saying we can necessarily raise the salaries of our police, our fire, the people that clean our streets in all kinds of weather and so forth and so on, pick up our trash, whether it's snowing outside or whatever, whether it's 85 degrees, 90 degrees outside, if they need to be taken care of. Our firemen, who go out on the highways and help with spills and so forth, dangerous, toxic spills, they need to be shown some appreciation. So let me say this, how do we get there? Well, there's only one way. We have to raise taxes in this city. I'm sorry, if we are going to reward the people that need to be rewarded, if we're going to take care of our students, our children, then we have to raise taxes, or we have to raise the garbage collection fee. Because anything short of doing those things, I will vote no. Not that I'm any more right than anybody here, but the contemplation and prayer, and I'm not ashamed to say that, the time that everybody needs to kind of do sometimes on their hands and their knees, because he will give you the answers, and he's giving me mine. So that's what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor.
I agree the school system needs a new school, but Bristol needs to survive. And while if it were just $300,000, probably wouldn't be a big deal, but they actually are also counting on another $250,000 in a year and a half or two from now. So we're talking, in order to fund this new school, $550,000 a year. A 20-year lease is $11 million. That's to be paid off in the same timeframe that we're trying to pay off the $110 million bonds that we have currently. So while I'm very much in favor of the new school, I'm not in favor of it now. In a couple of years, if the fall is doing what it's supposed to do, and various other things come online, we can certainly visit it. I personally haven't seen enough information on the school to even know exactly if they know what they're doing 100%. I know they're 100% behind it, and I am too, but I want to see all the detail. And I haven't seen those. But even if I have seen them, this year, I can't vote to do that. And that $300,000, there'd been a misconception that $300,000 is supposed to come out of school operations. They were just going to put that money away toward the new school. So the reality is, it's up to them to decide how they want to spend their money, but they do not have to cut programs that they currently have on books. So I mean, as I say, that's the way everybody thought it was going to happen in the public. Oh, they cut that, they're going to have to cut programs, and athletics will be impacted, and all this other junk. That's not the case, unless they choose to do it that way. But as much as I want to have them, help them to do a new school, we can't do it without a substantial tax increase, which Mr. Plener is alluding to. My calculation just on his comments, we're looking at a six-sentence minimum for the property tax increase. That's a $600,000 increase. That would cover the school and their plan. But can citizens afford that? We're already looking at $4 increase on the collection fee for the garbage. So that's $48 more a year on top of more property tax. And if that's what council wants, that's what we're going to have to do in order to do it. Otherwise, there's no way we can support building a new school at this time. In a couple of years, things can change, and you know, this program that they have available, public-private, is going to be around in two years, for sure. So it's not like it's going to go away if we don't jump on it now.
Well, my comments are, we just have to keep in mind that we need to do everything we can to make sure that we prepare ourselves to meet our financial obligations, and we got to look at our obstacles of what we're facing today. And the trend is, we are declining population. Last year, we was over 17,000, and now we're in the high 16,000. Last year, we sat here with 22% poverty. This year, we sat here with 23.7% poverty. Our trends are not looking good, and until we can figure out a way to get the jobs in here that can put the people back to work at a decent salary, the retail, the restaurants, they're not going to make a living. They're going to keep struggling, and we're going to keep heading in that opposite trend that we need to head in. We've got to figure out how to get this city going in with viable jobs that can support the family, to where people will be willing to move back in here, and when they get out of high school and go off to college, if they do so, we've got a job for them to come back to. The trend has been for the last 20-plus years that I'm aware of, our kids, our graduates have not been coming back because all of our industry, all of our good paying jobs have left us. And until we get the ear of Richmond and get them to understand what the situation truly is down here, we're at the mercy of doing what we can as a community. So what can we do as a community? We have to work together, we have to keep talking to one another. All the parents and the teachers and the taxpayers, they need to get involved with budgets of what is the school system doing with the funds that they're given? What is council doing with the funds and allocating to all these other entities? People needs to be involved. I have said it since I've been on council. It's going to take this whole entire city to get us through this. And if we work together, we can do it. But if we're in opposition, fighting for a single cause, it's just going to make the task that much more difficult. Number one, in my opinion, we need to survive as a city. And the city's job is to keep everything fully functional and intact. It's not going to be at the levels we've been accustomed to. It calls up the decline in population and growing in poverty, and we're going to talk about the jail situation here in a minute. But poverty breeds crime, and crime is what fills our jails up. We have got to get the message out in this community that they have another option, and we have got to strive to give them that other option. And jobs is what that option needs to be, a future in this city. It's not that we want to set up here and cut and slash. None of us wants to do that. But the bottom line is, every household has a budget that they have to live under. And this city has a budget, it has to live under. Sure, we can raise taxes, but we're already climbing. So what's going to be the cause and effect of that? More people's want to leave. Everything has to be thought out from the beginning to the end, because once you do something, the unintended consequences is going to follow. So we have to be very careful. And that's my input on that.
Well, first off, there's parts of what all of y'all have said, I agree with some that is very rich, but you know, I would say I thank everyone for the last 10 meetings that's came out. You mentioned involvement, and I think we, ever since I've been on council, I think all of us, everybody since we've been on council, has talked about the need for involvement. And I was thinking, that's probably the most people I've seen in this room. I don't think I've ever seen it where we had to have 80 people out there in overflow. And so, you know, if we're going to get people involved, I think, you know, one of the things is we need to listen to them and go back and get some of this a second look. Is it easy? No. You know, and as Doug said, you know, I would argue that education is an investment. It's an investment in our future. And the problems we're talking about, you know, I've heard people talk about, you know, emotion versus facts, and they may be emotional, but it's personal. I would say if I wasn't up here, I might be down there arguing the same thing, because this is our children, and you know, parents take that personally. But I don't think it's all emotional. But when you look at the facts, poverty, and you mention that, what's the number one thing that correlates with poverty? Educational opportunity. So if we can have strong schools, then you know, that works. What's the number one predictor of young people if they're going to be in jail? Third grade reading rates, if they can read at grade level. That's the number one predictor of how they determine, you know, jails and things like that. So again, all this ties back to education. We talked about jobs, and we need to have a discussion about jobs. And I know the city manager's working on some things, but what's our strategy? How are we going to go forward and get the public involved? Because over the past few weeks, during the campaign and some other things, I've had some opportunities to talk to a lot of different people and some business people, and I think they want to get involved. But we, you know, we need to come up with, here's some ideas, what do you think? And get them behind our ideas, because they can maybe help make some of those contacts in Richmond. There are other places we need. But we got to tell them, here's the direction we're going, not just, well, where are we going? We don't know. I mean, we have to have some discussion on our end about that. But you know, when you look at jobs, and we need the jobs, we need good jobs to keep families here, because you're right, the trend of population off through southwest Virginia is going down. It's as low as, I think, about a half a percent in Washington County to as much as 8% up in Buchanan County. I mean, it's going down. So these are jobs, not just for Bristol, but for the region. But if you look at the patterns and look at the census data and commuting patterns, jobs in this region, if we bring a job to Bristol, that doesn't mean this person's going to live in the city, doesn't mean they're going to shop in the city. So that's where we need, you know, people to live here, to invest in our city, to buy goods in our city, to pay real estate taxes in our city. What's going to be the one thing that's going to make them determine whether I want to live in Bristol, Kansas City, Salton County, Washington County versus Bristol, Virginia? If they've got children, they're going to look at the school system. You know, even if they don't have children, they're probably going to look and say, you know, they've got a new school there, that's going to help make the value of my home a little more, because it's in the district with a brand-new school versus the other ones over here. So in a lot of ways, I think, you know, if you look at education as an investment, over time, we'll see some of that return. You won't see it immediately, you won't see it in terms of dollars, but you will see it over time. I agree with Mr. Plener, that we need to invest in our employees.
Yes, sir.
And that was one thing that troubles me in this, and I don't know how we solve up problems in one year without, as Mr. Hubbard says, a huge tax increase. I think you probably could solve education without the garbage fees and some other ways. And I'd just say I prefer that, because that solves another problem with the landfill, which is something we continually, for years, it's on all the audits, the APA, so we're solving two problems, which is good, rather than creating more. Regarding the new school, you know, again, that's up to the school board, the location, what it is. I mean, when it comes to us, it's just about financing. But if we don't use this alternative method of financing, I see no way in the next, Dr. Perdian said 20 years, I think it's probably more closer to 12, that we could pay for a school using traditional methods. And so we've got a whole generation of students that start in first grade that will have to wait that long before they get a new school. And in the meantime, these buildings are getting older. They're going to have maintenance, and we're going to have to pay for that over that period of time. Plus, if we do, as some have said, close down Highland View, and again, I went there, my kids go there. It's an old school, it needs a lot of work. But you know, if you were to close it down, that creates a whole host of problems for families, as well as then now we've got a building that we've got to figure out a use for, or tear down. Because you cannot let that building sit there in that neighborhood without some very bad consequences happening. So again, looking forward, the new school route is the best way. But if you take the $300,000 out, what would be the death of the schools now? But if we're going to try and give faith to help with this new school, we're already, even if we leave the $300,000 at a quarter of a million dollar deficit in a couple of years, so that's going to probably be a tax increase, which is one reason I don't want one now, maybe not, but you might have to. But if you get down to coming up with a half a million, because that would be at the exact same time the swamp families ramp up, it almost becomes virtually impossible. So you know, both because of the short and the long-term things, I think we can, as much funding as we can put into the school will help us out. So I have more to add, I'm sure as we go along, but that's kind of where I look at all this.
Mr. Harlow, you do agree, I think I've heard you say this, you think we need to do something for our employees and not just one group of category employees, all our employees, even if it's a one-time bonus or something this year, we need to find the money. They earn it. They earn it.
No, well, I don't disagree with that, and like I say, I think, you know, that's going to be hard to find, I think, in the budget, because that's a recurring thing, but if something happens and we get some one-time money or we can find it, then yeah, because one, I mean, this year, you know, just like the school system, the reason they're wanting to give the teachers raises is they've seen people leave. We haven't given our employees raises, in fact, this year, they're paying more for their insurance. Over time, again, if you look at it as an investment, you want it to give people, and they work hard, they should be rewarded, and you want to keep them here, then you can't continue to not give them raises and ask more and more of them on the insurance side. Because in reality, by not giving them a raise and then asking them to pay more insurance, you're reducing the net take-home. And after a while, I mean, they love their job, the only people you'll get to stare at people are like, I'm 15 years vested in VRS, I got five to go. 18 years vested in VRS, I got two to go. I mean, that's, that's the mentality you're going to end up having, and the people that come in, you, they'll work the two or three years and get some experience and move on. So you become a training ground, and you don't have any continuity. So yeah, we need to do that. I'm not sure how you do that in the education this year, but I think going forward, that's definitely something I would say we should look at.
All right, well, let me wrap up kind of a summary then, hearing all the input here. Just kind of giving my take on everything that's transpired over the last couple of weeks. You know, the input over the last public hearing and, you know, here in city council chambers has been good. A lot, a lot of people came in, a lot of people commented on the schools and the items, right? But what we need is not people at the podium, right? I mean, you can come in here and talk at the podium about what your position is. What we need is the community to really get together and get into the details, get some work groups together, and really look at what do we need to do with the school system? You know, what does the community look at as far as the options we need to consider? So we had a separate meeting with the superintendent and a couple board members after the public hearing. And you know, my message to them was pretty simple. It was like, I'm not, I'm not sitting here for or against a new school. I just want to make sure that we look at these things very closely, because you're talking about a major decision when you're talking about new school. You're talking about a long-term financial commitment, a long-term commitment to the school system and some large shifts in the way you're doing things now. So you need to look at this really close. This is not a decision that you just lightly go forward. So we need people to come together to look at all the options, because from where I said, we haven't seen all the options. We've heard the public-private option, you know, private money funding a new school. But in the same breath, we all know, the new school construction costs, and you get private investors involved, the quality of that construction can be not what you desire. So they're looking to make money on that investment. So you got to be really careful, you know, which path to take. So some other options we have, we have assets of the school system today, buildings that are pretty solidly constructed. So what are the options we could use to use the current assets we've got, maybe at least for a few years, right, to give us time to get our finances further along? So we're in a better position to do something about a new school, or maybe even have the funds to modify one of the schools. So I'm not seeing those options. So I'm challenging the superintendent and the school system to, you know, look at all the options, be very unbiased, and look at every option in detail, you know, not on the surface, in detail. You know, how many students do you have in each school? How many teachers? What's the classroom ratio? What's the state allowing the classroom ratios? Which schools are doing the best in the city as far as their grades on three, four, and five, you know, standardized testing? How can we, how can we use what we have and come up with a better formula, at least in the short term, to get us to where we need to? Because I told him, and I'll be transparent about it, I said, we cannot think budget neutral. I said, okay, this school project is a budget-neutral project. We cannot think budget-neutral. Budget-neutral means we're no more down the path of being financially stable than we are sitting here. It's got to be a project that really helps this city from a cost-financial standpoint, right? Budget-neutral doesn't get us there. And education is an investment, but there's other ways of doing it. So I just think it's a, I just think it's a discussion that's got to be studied further. I think $300,000, it was mentioned more than once, it's not anything that they can't deal with. And I'll say it once again, I don't view the $300K as a cut, it's not a cut. The state actually takes an index, that's where you got to get into the details. The state has an index, right? They look at all the communities and their ability to pay for education. So they look at real estate assessed value, the poverty level, the per capita income, and they come up with a formula, and they say, this community is only able to pay this amount for education. So therefore, the state puts in a bigger portion when that community doesn't have the ability to pay. So that's why you see places like Bristol, Virginia getting more money than places like Alexandria, Virginia. So the index changed. So what's not being said in the public domain is, our index actually went in the direction of the state put in more money, right? So they're actually getting more money, not less. The dollars are up, $900-plus thousand dollars has come to the school system. So that, and the effect of that is, that means the county doesn't have to put in as much. And the message there is the state saying, we're putting in more because we see you as a community not having the ability to pay. And that's why that index works that way. The other thing you got to look at the details is these reports that the superintendent of school's put to the state level. This is about every Washington, every county, every city in the state. How many pupils, how many tax dollars go toward education? So it's really easy to put it on a per-student basis. So you divide how much tax dollars Bristol, Virginia puts in, and how much we're spending on a per-student basis. So you're going to be surprised when you look at that. I was surprised when I looked at that. We're actually putting in more per student than other places similar to us, like Vanderbilt and Galax, and other communities that are poor like us. So we need to understand that. We need to understand, are we really putting together the education dollars for a community like us that's fair, reasonable, and it's going to get the investment we need in education? So there's a lot more to talk about there than just increasing taxes. I don't think increasing taxes is the answer. I think that's a, I think that's maybe what we have to do. But like Mr. Wingard said, and some others, I think I've said it, our number one priority is to make sure this city's in a position, in the next four to six years, to still be a city and still pay its bills. And that's the only reason I'm sitting here. So I look at it as a holistic problem. So I look at it as a holistic problem, and see every department, education, public safety, has to be, has to be part of that solution. So if we need to put a short-term plan together that's better than a new school, that gets us where we need to be as a city, as a team, as a city as a team, then that's what we need to do. So, that's the way I'm looking at it. So I don't wanna go up or down or cut any particular departments, but the job one is to make sure the city's in the right position it needs to be when we gotta pay our bills. And, because those bills are not gonna go away, no matter how much we budget in this room, they're not gonna go away. So if we have to increase our tax rate and do nothing different, you're gonna be surprised what the real estate tax rate is seven years from now. I mean, it's gonna be tremendous in order to pay our bills. It's not a little number. So, so that's all I wanna say. I think we gotta keep an open mind, I think we need people involved in a detailed manner, and I think we can get through this and move to where we need to. Time to that, City Manager.
All right, Council, that was a few comments, I'll take them up, and everybody's comments in regards to where everybody is.
You've got three minutes.
If you all spend thirty-three minutes on doing a lot of topics, I think we've spent another thirty-two thousand minutes. And I was going to the same place, ended up all in minutes, so I'll take one more minute. We'll be out this morning, I'll look at it. Greg, if I can have the presentation. Gentlemen, I've got eighteen slides here that goes through a variety of different topics. I think each topic can be discussed this morning. I would ask, I know you want to have questions about each one of these topics, but sooner I get through these, I think we can get where we need to be sooner rather than later today. Most of the answers with some of the topics I'll discuss will find in these slides. Just do another quick overview, maybe. Here's our agenda for today. I'm gonna do a budget summary, revenue review, expenditure summary, then we'll talk about the items of interest. And these, these items of interest are items of interest that I have developed over the past few weeks, after having discussions and emails amongst all of you all. School funding is an issue, overtime is an issue, outside agency funding is an issue, and the other one is jail overcrowding. So here's our budget summary. Our general fund revenues, fifty-one point five million dollars. We have gone back over these revenues. I do not feel comfortable thinking that we can adjust those revenues up. At this point, based on historical analysis, I think the mayor's right. Where actuals are from the sixteen, seventeen years, when you look at what our actuals have been, not only in sixteen, seventeen, but years previous, I think that revenue is in line with where we need to be at this point. If at the end of the day, that revenue line is greater in fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, great. It means we did our job, and we actually, based on actuals, and we've had some growth within the city if things increase. Solid waste disposal fund is five point five million. There was a decrease in that revenue this year, simply because, without the collection rate increase, I should say. And that's all based on actuals as well. Capital projects is eleven point six million. Three hundred and one thousand of that is local funds, and that's a transfer from the general fund into the capital project fund. It's not a true revenue to the capital project fund. So total, this year, we have a sixty-eight point eight million dollar budget. Here's our revenue from local sources. As you can see, it was about a half a million dollar decrease from local sources. I honestly think that's in line with where we need to be, based on historical analysis of the numbers. Revenue from the Commonwealth has increased slightly, close to half a million. Revenue from the federal government has increased as well. Our capital project fund, you can see it's increased by one point seven million this year. You do not see a number of total revenue from local sources, because it's really not any revenue from local sources. That is just a transfer from the general fund, which is included in the one point two-five million under total of other financing sources. So what changes in expenditures? In information technology, we will be implementing Kronos and the supplies that go along, and other supplies that IP needs in order to properly run the city. Everything is based on some sort of informational technology nowadays, and we need to be planning for, to get these supplies that we need, so we can operate effectively. We've reduced the full-time employee of the police department. Our department has been reduced by two full-time employees. The sheriff's department, we increased in this budget year by three hundred thousand dollars. The budget for inmate housing. Animal control, we're having to add a employee and a half, and the shelter costs. The shelter costs should be absorbed in fiscal year eighteen, and not the upcoming fiscal year. Streets and engineering, four full-time employee positions have been eliminated, but that, those funds have been put into contract mode. That way, if they do need extra help on certain projects, there's, they do have contract labor funds available and contract labor in order to do those projects. Reduce local funding for schools and social services. We've eliminated three parking wrecks, full-time employees. Expenditures this year also include salary for a director of economic development. The debt service includes payments in the refinanced savings, and we've transferred the solid waste was reduced by the collection rate increase of four dollars. Now, we'll talk about schools. I know this has been a big topic, and I wanna try to get some data together with Council in order, so we can see exactly what we're dealing with. Elementary includes pre-K, there's a total of eleven hundred and five students. And by the way, Council, I emailed this presentation to y'all last night. Eleven hundred and five students, there's a total of sixteen-one teachers, which is an eighteen-to-one student ratio. In middle school, there's five hundred and eight students. Total teachers is forty, which is a twelve-to-one ratio. High school is six hundred and thirty-nine students, with forty-nine teachers, it's a thirteen point oh-four ratio. If you wanna take the total ratio, I think that still equates to about an eighteen-to-one ratio for the city for total students. Here's our required local effort. When you go back and look at past fiscal years and what we have budgeted this coming year, I did not include this upcoming fiscal year, simply because are we getting the exact number for required local effort, local match, has been a little difficult. So you can see the required local effort in fiscal year fifteen is four point two, in sixteen, it dropped down to four point one, it's about a forty thousand dollar drop, and seventeen, it creeped back up to about additional sixty thousand dollars. And then, once again, it dropped off again in fiscal year eighteen. Our required local match has stayed steady the past three years at roughly five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The debt service for the school system has stayed constant at eight hundred and sixty-five, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So a total that has been budgeted for each of those years is roughly five point six million dollars. However, over those same years, we have added additional local funds. So we have funded the school system at roughly twenty-three percent over our local funding requirements, about twenty-one percent over each one of these years. Or, I'm sorry, twenty-three percent. Here's the school revenue trend. You can see that the state has increased since fiscal year fifteen. Their per pupil spending, per source. Our local has decreased slightly, but overall, it's a flat, flat line. And then, our federal government has decreased as well since fiscal year thirteen. However, it seems to be on the up end at the moment. Here's this, another graph showing total revenue trends. You can see in fiscal year thirteen, fourteen point six million was from state sources. And since, over the past six years, that has increased to sixteen point one million. So roughly one and a half million dollars of funding has been increased from the state to local, to the schools. Here's our locality comparisons. The LCI, the mayor, is correct, that there is a formula that is used in order to determine the locality's ability to pay, and that's based on your real property value, your gross income, and your relative, your sales and access within the city. And as you can see, we rank number three on this list, behind Stanton and Waynesboro, for our ability to pay, and Radford and Martinsville fall below us. This is the school funding as a percent of the city budget. Over, and when you do the locality comparisons, it appears that around twelve and a half percent of the school's budget, other localities is a little bit more significant than the city of Bristol's. Percent of the general fund, our general fund supporting the schools were roughly twenty-five percent of our, the funds support the schools, support the schools' budget. And that's on par with Martinsville and Radford, Stanton and Waynesboro, which had a higher LCI than we, we do, is at thirty-five and thirty-seven percent. Employee overtime, this has been a discussion over, over the, as I did an analysis of overtime, it appears it's about two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of overtime that is budgeted throughout the city and departments. It, based on conversations we've had, we may need to tighten up on the overtime and have some sort of approval process in place in order for these departments to use the overtime. Look at scheduling to determine how we can better schedule employees, so that we don't have as much to spend in overtime as we have in years past. You can see what we have proposed was, the left-hand column, under the proposed budget, is what we've proposed for this year. The right-hand column is the alternative option, which basically I've reduced each department's overtime by fifty percent, still allowing them to have some overtime. But then, we would eventually move those dollars into the contingency fund, and we would have some sort of approval process in place for that, so there'd be a savings of a hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred dollars by moving that to the contingency fund. Not that it wouldn't be spent on overtime, it's just, this is another set of eyes on overtime, and how we're scheduling employees, and how those funds are being used. I can, I will say this, and I'll say it again along aluminum face, if employees work overtime, you must pay overtime, regardless of what the situation is. Outside agency funding, based on conversations, there's a one hundred thousand dollars in the budget currently for CDB. There's no other non-mandated outside agency funding is included. So this is the only non-mandated outside agency funding, and I know that there are some discussions in regards to how to allocate that one hundred thousand dollars for CDB. Jail overcrowding. These charts here will show you where the break-even point is for the city jail. On the left is the local jail option, on the right is regional jail option. At two hundred and twenty-five inmates today, the sheriff's budget's five point one million dollars. And out of that five point one, nine hundred thousand's to get dedicated to inmate housing at other localities. If the jail population decreases to a hundred and five, forty-five inmates, you could roughly say that the budget would be four point two million, because you could take out nine hundred thousand from that budget. If the inmate population decreased to a hundred and twenty inmates, there would be some additional savings. Getting that down to an exact number would be, is, at this point, it would be hard to say. But based on calculations I've done, I think the budget could go down to three point eight million dollars. Now, out of each of those, there's local funding. So, for two hundred and twenty-five inmates, two point five-six million dollars is from a locality. A hundred and forty-five inmates is one point six-six million, and local funding would stay the same at one point six-six million for a hundred and twenty inmates as well. If you go to the regional jail, you can see two hundred and twenty-five inmates, the local funding is three point six million, which is roughly one point, one million dollars more than two hundred and twenty-five inmates at the local jail option. A hundred and forty-five inmates, with local funding would be two point five million dollars, which is still almost as great as having two hundred and twenty-five inmates in our city jail. And a hundred and twenty inmates, local funding's one point six million dollars, which is quite a good cost to sustain the local jail with a hundred and forty-five or a hundred and twenty inmates. Below a hundred and twenty inmates is where I think the city would have to start looking and going to the regional jail option, where the city would actually be saving money. Our trash collection rates, have a proposed budget with a four-dollar increase in residential trash collection rates. Have to do an ordinance amendment, and we'll do that, maybe do it on the May twenty-second and the June eighth meeting, in order to have that effective July one. Here are the options available to Council at this point, based on conversations I've had. We can reduce the overtime budget by approximately fifty percent, and add that to the contingency fund. Additional increase to the collection fee, that's on top of the four-dollar collection fee that I've already proposed. Red allocate some CDB funds, and also include in our budget, maybe not necessarily a line item, I know that's been mentioned, but set aside funds for auxiliary police and involve your fire staff allocation. Those funds would probably be under your training and supplies under each one of those departments. So with that being said, at this point, we've got a first reading of the budget ordinance set for May twenty-second, and a second reading on Tuesday through the twelfth, barring any unforeseen circumstances.
All right, so let's, let's start at the revenue side, just have a couple of comments. You said that the, on the revenue side, that you feel where the revenue budget line is were good. You don't feel like we can go up without adding a lot more risk to the budget? Do you see any downside risk?
Well, there's always a potential for downside risk. Your real estate taxes are gonna be pretty, pretty steady. I mean, if you own real, if you own real estate in the city, you're gonna pay the real estate taxes for the most part. There is a line item in our budget for delinquent taxes, because we always estimate for delinquent taxes. So that's taken into account. I think where your downside could potentially be is gonna be on your other local taxes, which is gonna be your local sales and use tax, business license tax, tax of lodging tax, and restaurant mils tax. I think that's where you're most volatile, simply because we can't control who's coming and staying into the city, and buying bills in the city, and purchasing goods in the city. That's where that's due most volatile. Based on what I've seen and what I know, I would anticipate the potential for local sales tax increasing. When we have new business coming online at the fall, I think they're scheduled to be open sometime in September. So that would increase some local sales tax. We also have some restaurants coming online later in the fall. That has already been included in this budget. So in regards to changing some of those most volatile ones, it would be a very, I don't think it'd be a prudent move to say that we could increase so significantly.
Let me ask, I mean, 'cause that is a question I've asked when we met. Some of these, with both the real estate and concerning developments, we know they're kind of, and, you know, you mentioned the one at the fall. You know, I think, both in terms of sales and real estate tax, you know, that, the timing of that, it looks, until about yesterday, it looks like they, they will be open before the end of the year. I would anticipate, they say much before that, so, you know, to me, why, both in terms of real estate and sales, I think to incorporate something there, we know that will be open, and something will happen.
If I'm not mistaken, my initial, probably March fifteenth to March seventeenth, I had put in the real estate taxes, twelve million dollars. After we went back and looked at it, we added additional a hundred and fifty thousand. I think part of that includes the Hobby Lobby, if I'm not mistaken, is that in the sun?
Yes, some of the other things I mentioned were, but I think that one.
And so, based on, if you're going on what the building will be worth, I think there's a potential that you could add roughly sixty-five thousand dollars to ourselves for our real estate tax, just for half a year for this building.
Sixty-five?
I think sixty-five is that number.
I noticed on the phase one of our DRI project.
Do what?
I'll say the Camello's levels at phase one, part of our project at the fall. I notice projecting a million-dollar sales tax revenue in the DRI phase one, that's a...
I had it here in Austin. It's twenty-four, zero-ten-dash-zero-five-hundred, sales tax, BRI, being gone. Do we know what effect that will have? That's on page thirteen of the finance statement. worksheet that you prepared earlier.
That's the state sales tax?
Yeah, the one percent, I presume, in your.
Right.
What happens if Cabela's leaves? Is that kind of, kind of impacts that going to have to that number? And what then in return, what is that impact going to have from revenue on people?
Well, it'll be a tremendous impact. We have prepared for, I think what we would prepare for for this upcoming fiscal year, based on the current contract that's in place, I think they would have to stay in business until no later than the end of October. And it's just common sense, I'm thinking that they would stay open at least through the holiday period to get the holiday sales, but after that, I think we'd have six months of lost revenue. I really can't say what that would be specifically, simply because the code does, the code doesn't allow me to talk about that public.
Right, well, I'm just saying, that's, that's a potential bomb to the revenue side.
Correct.
That's not nearly as firm as most of our other.
Correct.
Yeah, that's why, that's actually the thing I had circled and we talked about a couple of times is there's interesting here, it's that DRI phase one and, and phase two and three. So I would just say the message I had sent the city manager is, is opposite of what Mr. Hartley said, is we cannot count on tax revenues until they actually happen. Project delays can happen, so you never count on revenues until you actually have them flowing in. But on the downside of this, we have these flowing in and we know there is potential risk there. So if anything, there's an argument to say we should pull the top line down a little bit to be more aggressive on downside risk than the neutral risk. And so that's what I wanted to open up for the council to think about. Because if you look at that million dollars Mr. Hubbard's talking about, and if things go the way he's describing, that million could be down to four-hundred thousand roughly. So you, you've got, you've got a really big number in there.
I want to call the council, in regards to specific numbers, when we're talking about this, we have to be careful about the specific.
Understand that, but we have to talk about the budget, so we've got a million dollars there, that's a risk, right? That DRI phase one, two is a risk, right? So what we put on that line item to budget the rest of the costs around is important. And I'm not talking about specific companies, I'm talking about anybody up there. That's, that's a development that's in process. It can go either way, right? And just like the other communities around Exit Seven, the other businesses, we've seen them kind of go because of what's going on in that market. So anything we're getting in the, in the revenue side from that kind of private market movement is risky, right? And so we've got to be really sure that we feel good about the safety of that number. Because the only thing we can control is the real estate tax, the property tax and those things. So we have that in our control, but those other things aren't in our control. So we've got to be more conservative on those items. So I throw that out not to say we should come down or not. I'm saying if there's risk on revenue, those are kind of things council needs to understand. What do you want to budget on the revenue line? Do you want to leave it where it's at? Because if we start adding money back on the cost line, we'll bring everybody back to that line item. Because if that goes down and we miss it, then you just multiply the effect of any kind of cost that we put back in the.
Well, with that being said, I do want council to know, I do have contingency plans in place, not only for this coming year, but for next year as well, if there is a significant decrease up there. Those contingency plans include a, the funds not being available for new fire truck and also vacancies, vacancies that we have in the city, we'll cover those costs for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. If, if that event does happen for nineteen, twenty, we would have to eliminate the complete deficit at the landfill of five-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. And we would potentially have to be looking at cutting no less than ten positions within the city or a five-cent real estate tax increase or a combination of all three.
Well, more reason, Mr. City Manager, to go ahead and implement now a two-cent per hundred tax increase. Because if that catastrophe happens, then what you're going to be doing is throwing on the people all at once, five cents per hundred. If we do the two, two cents per hundred, we can maybe help with some things we need to help with now. And we can always take it back perhaps after one year if things are going well, but, you know, to tell people, there's a contingency out here and it's going to be five cents a hundred on top of the four-dollar waste collection fee.
And that would only be a piece of it, Mr. Plaine, does it have?
Oh, I understand there's four components, so if you don't want to cut ten people under that contingency, then you're talking, what we've basically talked about forever, ten, ten cents, twelve cents or four more dollars on collection and some combination of that. I mean, that's where we're potentially at and probably realistically going to be in January one of two thousand nineteen. So we'd either take a little, take a little bit of now, now, or dump a lot on people. I mean, I've heard up here over and over, we don't want to be a town. Well, guess what? If we don't start funding things and hoping that the magic, some magic happens, then we're really asking for, for, and you talk about people leaving the roads, if you do it one time at five cents a hundred, you can't, you can't stop people from leaving because they can't afford the taxes. But if we do two cents now, we can afford that and we can do the school. And we can help out our public employees a little bit. I'm not saying raise their, hey, give them something. I mean, that is, to me, it seems like, you know, we're short-sighted here. And we're saying we don't, we don't want to raise taxes anymore. I don't want to raise taxes anymore. That affects my family as much as it affects anyone else up here or anyone else out here that pays real estate. But, you know, when do we realize that it's better to be cautious and prudent rather than conservative and foolish? And I've been conservative and foolish all my life, I guess, when it comes to money, but I, this is something we can't help. If we really want to keep the city, we can't help it. And we know that that contingency is going to have to come into play and it's probably going to have to come into play before we finish out this fiscal year that we're dealing with now. That's something to thank about.
Plus, you can't do a property tax increase mid-year because it won't, you won't get any money.
That's right.
So that's off the table as far as a contingency to cover this year's projection.
Which is not included in this year's.
Right, right. So, well, I'm not going to argue the point, you, like, the capital projects can suffer if the DRI suffers. That's a, that's not going to kill operations right away. Do you currently have unfunded positions in the budget in the police and fire?
In police department, I have one unfunded position and fire. There are four unfunded positions at this, or four funded positions that are unfilled. One funded position in police is unfilled. When you do the numbers based on overtime, it appears the fire department needs to hire two additional firefighters in order to bring their overtime numbers back into line with the four whole numbers that they've had in the past.
Well, realistically too, Mr. Reeves, remembering the budget, and obviously you're not going to fill two roles. You're not going to be filling two roles. The city attorney was budgeted, I think, at a hundred-and-fifty thousand. And realistically, we could potentially be contract out labor to that at half of that. So there would be potentially a savings of seventy-five thousand dollars there. And, I mean, you know.
Some of you all might not be doing either position, you know.
Well.
History though, I had done on my notice too, that's one thing we talked about for sure.
Yeah, me.
Well, let's get back to real estate tax. I mean, everybody, everybody's got the book or access to the book, so, you know, on page seventy-two is the history of the real estate tax history, right? So a couple of things I want to comment on here. From two thousand ten, okay, to two thousand fourteen, you know, just have the city council try to make themselves look good and lower the real estate tax rate, right? So a hundred, a dollar-five a hundred is what our tax rate was in two thousand and nine. And then it dropped down to ninety-four cents, stayed at ninety-four, ninety-four, ninety-nine, one oh one. When you look at this city, we're, we should be around a dollar, five, dollar seven for our side. If you look at the state of Virginia and all the cities, so that decision by that council cost this city four million dollars of revenue, four million.
I wish you had time to hear me talking.
From two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen. It went from a dollar five, stayed down at ninety-four, stayed there, went up to ninety-nine, dollar one. But since then, it's, we've had to take it up to increase the real estate reserve, or the reserve fund, so now it's at a dollar seventeen, right? So you can't do that, that's why communities got to get involved, right? That's just politicians trying to make themselves look good. There was no, there was no argument for that, right? Now, we were at a dollar nineteen, right? The other thing to point out here, we were at a dollar nineteen in two thousand seventeen. You know, we had the reappraisals on real estate, right? So we adjusted down about two cents. So we did talk about a little bit of leaving that dollar nineteen alone and putting that extra amount into the reserve fund.
Not valid.
No, we talked about it.
Oh, yeah, couldn't do it.
We didn't, we didn't do anything there. We could have passed, you know, a budget and said, we're going to increase our reserve fund funding, right?
The state losses after an appraisal, the revenues cannot go up with certain.
Talking about before.
Oh, well, yeah.
Before we settled, right?
Okay.
That we established a restricted fund.
Yeah, exactly.
But we did, and so we were at a dollar nineteen, so I'm just pointing that out because that was dollar seventeen. So the city has seen a dollar nineteen per hundred, you know, in the last twenty-four months. I mean, we've been there, right? So I just point that out so that everybody understands that's what the two cents means.
And also during that time period, I'd like to remind everyone, we were facing a recession within the country, which means other revenues were on the decline as well, because people weren't out spending money. So now you've had a double whammy with your local taxes being reduced simply because people weren't spending money. Plus, you've had revenues drop off, drop due to the fact that real estate tax is being created, so.
Now, it's also the council that got us involved in that DRI project also. So four million dollars is really life prepared for what kind of burden that two thousand ten, two thousand fourteen put on the city that we're having to figure out ways to keep it going. And, you know, so if you, so what you're saying, if we, if we raised it up, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, two cents, if we could take it to a dollar twenty-one, is that right?
Dollar nineteen. We're at a dollar seventeen. Which again, is still high for a community this size, we should be around a dollar seven. You know, if this, if this city was managed properly and had been managed for years, we'd be around a dollar five, a dollar seven. That's where we should be.
Without falls, we'd be there.
Without all this stuff, without the solid waste landfill, without the falls, without all this stuff we've done, our city, we should be around a dollar five, a dollar seven.
You know, and the sad thing, Mr. Mayor, is we've, we've talked about it several times in the last couple of years we brought this up, that we've been killed by former councils. And it's the truth, but you can't get people to understand it. In a lot of ways, this last election showed they want to go back to those days. Let's go back to spend and spend and spend. So, you know, we'll see if they want to go back to the same group of people that got us in the, well.
Well, let's cut to the chase, we got, we got to tell the city manager something on the revenue side. So what's the appetite of city council? Are you, are, is this council ready to go up in real estate taxes? Is that what I'm hearing? Or you want to go up in solid waste funding or you want to leave it alone? We just, we just saw we're going up in solid waste funding, right? Which, we could go up more there, we decided that that was a reasonable jump, that we do need to go up there because that thing is losing money and we're having to fund it through the current account. But what's, what's the appetite of council here?
What is the purpose of the two cents again? What are we going to do with the money? It's only two-hundred thousand dollars, it's not going to address anything we've talked about. So it's got us to put aside for emergencies.
Well, the one thing that concerns me, we were talking about the jail studies that we had up here and, Mr. City Manager, and what I haven't heard yet from anyone, now, I know they're going to address this in a moment, but you've shown it on the, on the, it's the finisher side of your slides. How much is the cost to modernize and fix? We haven't heard that cost either.
Can you pull up the slides, give them?
Forty and, forty and the cost, let's stay focused on revenue, so.
I didn't know the cost before I made a decision on two cents.
We'll want to come back to that. So if, if, if council has no appetite to raise real estate taxes at all under no circumstances, then, then we can just line through it and not come back to it. But if, if you've got an appetite to go up by a couple of cents, it means two-hundred thousand dollars and we can come back and talk about it, what, what we do with the money, right, once we go to the expense side.
Well, let me tell you what, I, I, I said it earlier, I have an appetite for it. And when you say that, I mean, look, realistically, we can cut the city attorneys from a hundred-and-fifty to seventy-five, maybe even down to sixty, five thousand per month. Then what we do is we raise two cents, then we can come back in on the potential for the school. They can escrow those funds and potentially get started on a new school. And probably if we cut through this budget enough, you know, we, realistically, we can probably find some sort of bonus payment for our public employees. Now, I'm not saying raising their, that we can't afford to raise a cent, a percent, because we have to pay benefits on top of that, so it actually is more than what it appears to be. But a, a bonus to them or something along those lines would be appropriate. So, yeah, I'm prepared as a citizen of this city and as a councilman to save two cents. And that may not be enough, but I'm prepared to save two cents.
Nowhere near enough.
No, I know that, but at least, at least it takes the pain out of it, perhaps next year or so.
Well, I mean, if you're talking about doing the raises next year and not this year, and I say this year, the seventeen.
One, I thought about one-time payment, Mr. Pope. I, I don't think we can afford as a city to go up anymore.
You still have to have the money for one-time payment.
True, true, that's true, that's true, I get you.
I, I would be more in favor of looking at the collection fee because there's not a huge difference in one cent in tax and one dollar there. And, and the collection fee is solving another problem that, that we have with the landfill. It's, it's making it more sustainable, you know, and, but.
How much of a taste do you have for that?
Let me give you the number, one dollar rate on the collection fee equates roughly eighty thousand dollars.
It's about a hundred or so.
So if we went four dollars more to eight.
Well, we already went up to.
We're at eighteen, right?
Yeah.
So you go up eight dollars.
Another dollar maybe. Depending what we need and what, what's to go.
So we laid the groundwork, we were at fourteen, I think, that right?
Eighteen.
We were at eight.
We're at eighteen.
We're at eighteen currently. Twenty-two, based on all conversations I've had.
So we're eighteen, we went up four to twenty-two.
Based on Mr. Hartley's comments, maybe going to twenty-three or twenty-four.
So that four dollars is about three hundred and.
Three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, I think. And because we owe VDU, you have to take ninety-five percent because we owe VDU five percent for the collection fee because they take care of it on their side for the.
So two dollars more would give us.
Roughly a hundred and sixty thousand.
So three hundred and twenty plus twenty-nine plus one sixty.
Correct.
So about five hundred thousand dollars?
Correct.
How did you get to?
Where, where does that come from?
I thought you said four would be three twenty-nine.
Four is already in there.
Okay, but you're adding four dollars.
That's what I'm saying, there's already four, so maybe one.
Hundred and ten, I think you might.
We already went up on the collection field.
Still not good for any of this, maybe.
No, but. So a little two dollars gives us about a hundred and sixty.
Because I think that puts us in a better spot, I mean, versus two cent on the real estate.
As long as we're going to say, I'm for it.
Revenue.
I say, as long as we're going to put that money in reserve and not spend it, I'm for it. If we're going to spend it, we're not gaining any ground, we can't do anything with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars compared to what we talked about.
Well, we're just trying to come up with what looks out there. We'll come back and summarize it when we get to the.
And remember, and remember, when we do a rate increase on solid waste fund, that's going to the enterprise fund, so it really does not necessarily affect the general fund backwards. It, it's back, exactly.
It's less money we send that, right?
We've got to prepare for Cabela's closing, that, that we've got to prepare for that contingency now. We've got to.
Which contingency?
Cabela's shutting the doors after all that.
Yeah, and I think this is the only place to put that.
We'll talk about these in a while, let's keep it, keep it as a general discussion. We're all speculating, speculation doesn't.
Well, yeah, it doesn't count.
We do it all the time. I mean, I do it on the street every day, okay?
All right, so, um. So we talked about real estate taxes, about that collection fee, a couple of dollars, uh, as any other revenue items? Property taxes, say.
Uh, question I have is the unassigned fund balances, could we get a total debt rundown? I know we split it up between the general fund, one point one million, some odd change, and then there's some in the landfill reserve for bond payment.
Yeah, then, when you, you're talking about when you split up the.
How much are we putting away to the side for bond payment purposes? I know we have actually one point one million unassigned fund in the general fund, and there's a fairly large number in the landfill for bond debt reserve.
Okay, why she looks that up, we're gonna take a five minute question break. All right, we're ready to get started. All right, so we'll move from revenues now, I think, into expenses. So. You started taking straight expenses, we'll put the summary up again just real quick, so we got the summary of expenses up.
Here's the expenditure changes this past year, this couple of years, I should say.
Okay, so the animal control has to go up because we have ten animal shelters, we talked about that, right? Supplies, is that, is that a must do this year?
Which one?
The chronos.
We have liability issues if we do not do chronos.
The liability issues?
That's, and the cost of the chronos is roughly, I'm gonna say thirty thousand, and our liability issues are, uh, tenfold that by not having a proper time keeping the system in place. Supplies, the majority of the supplies there are for police vehicles, uh, leasing computers for the police. And I even reduced it by half of what they wanted to purchase, simply because we just can't purchase everything all at once. Um, I think Mr. Wingard's been out with the officers at least one time, and their computers are. They need significant upgrades, as I believe.
I said, please wait while we update your software thirty minutes later.
You made something on overtime in there, where was the overtime slide?
So here, um, these are all the departments that have a line item for overtime. Finance requests a five hundred dollars in overtime, um, I've reduced that to zero. Electoral board, two thousand dollars reduced again. Police department, they have a hundred and twenty six thousand eight hundred, that does not include special events or grant overtime. I think we need to leave the special events alone, they have forty two thousand in budget for that, and forty two thousand dollars in, uh, grant overtime. Need to leave those alone due to the fact that we do have two races every year, we have rhythm and roots, uh, and special events such as that, Christmas tree lighting. Items such as that, we know what we're gonna spend, so it's a hundred and twenty six thousand eight hundred that's allocated for other overtime, which would include, you know, officers' coloring for people on vacation or sick leave. At this point, I've reduced that by half, and will attempt to work on a better scheduling system. However, that, those funds are gonna have to be moved in contingency, I'm gonna have to know that those funds are set aside for overtime. If they work overtime, they've gotta be paid overtime.
So this, uh, overtime you're proposing, we take all the department overtime to zero, with that money gets scooted over into city manager contingency fund, and then it's on a high total basis?
I'm saying we take half of those funds and move it to contingency, simply because I know there's gonna be overtime. You know, regardless of what we attempt to do, we know there's gonna be overtime. The question is, what can we do to help reduce that overtime? And I think starting at a fifty percent reduction is the best. Um, if we, if, throughout this next fiscal year, if we can see that they have, uh, met the goals of overtime, based on this fifty percent reduction, we know we're on the right path, what else can we do to improve scheduling, improve other things? So that we do not have to, uh, pay it out in overtime as much as we have. So you can see, right now, we have two hundred and fifty one thousand, four hundred dollars left in overtime that can be adjusted. And I would adjust that by taking it down, uh, to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is a hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. We need to go to the reserve fund or to a contingency fund.
So, I mean, what's the point of doing that?
Well, this is just one of the options, if we're gonna fund these schools or, um, this is how, this is how you can get.
Fund the school, you're not gonna have any contingency.
Right, so I mean, this is, this is just one of the options.
What was the question?
What are we gonna do with this? The answer is.
Here's the, here's the idea, you don't, you don't, you don't budget or plan for overtime, you manage overtime. So the way you manage it, the guy who has to make that decision, you take whatever time you think you might have, because you can't predict it, and you put it over in the city, city manager's fund, so that it just doesn't get spent arbitrarily.
That's good.
That's what, that's what.
I understood that in case we wanted to fund the school.
Well, this is just one piece, this is just one piece, depending on all the different options that we have, when you start moving this money.
Well, this is the piece at all, it's, you've got.
But I said, from the beginning, this goes into the contingency fund.
All right, yours.
Right.
Yeah, so he can decide if.
I've got no problem with that, but only through, and if you wanna fund the school, here's some money, no, it's not money.
Well, what he's saying, there might be money there, and if it's managed aggressively, you might find that there is a hundred thousand dollars.
At the end of the year.
Yeah, that does get spent, it depends on how you run.
Which will be used next.
This, this goes to contingency.
On the run rate, depends on, you may wake up half a hundred thousand dollars less than overtime you've spent.
We also mandated that they patrol the interstate within the city limits. And that, according to the chief, at the time that we asked him to do that, was gonna require overtime. In order to do that, because it's basically outside the city limits, so it's the. Normal, I should say, the normal routines of.
If you go back to the revenues, I have adjusted the revenues based on what I've seen on actuals. It is on page nine, count fourteen thousand, five hundred and four figures. You can see that last year, there was, it was budgeted a hundred and sixty two thousand in other fines. That's one four oh one oh zero 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 three. That has been reallocated back up to court fines, because as far as the court's concerned, they don't care how it was, how those fines were received, it's simply a fine in their book, and then they send it to us. So there's internal controls now in place to see exactly how effective that has been. So I've reduced that amount roughly a little over half, and we're only including two hundred thousand dollars in our budget, uh, for fines altogether for this upcoming year. So we did reduce that, um. Right, but, you know, I, we're still expecting seventy thousand dollars, basically, from, you know, policing and radaring, that we're also expecting. So there will be overtime, but that was just, it's, we haven't set aside as much for it.
Well, it, it seems to me that, if, this is just going in contingency, it's more of an administrative thing, it's not.
That's just something that we hope we don't spend.
At the end of the year, you might end up with some extra fines, or if you go along, you might have something in case something pops up that you know where it's. You can take this on, but it's not solving some of the other issues, so.
Well, do you imagine it, if your fines are greater than the overtime you're paying, then you're gonna come down.
And I guess one of my questions is with, where you have vacancies in police and fire, you know, in, in the overtime we have now. If you actually staff those up, then does that, will that help reduce the overtime?
In regard, in regards to police, probably not, because they were only frozen two positions this year. Uh, I eliminated one of those positions, their overtime is, um, it would be, it need to be significantly more than just one person added back in order to, uh, eliminate any overtime.
Well, it's, real problem that I see in the police department is if the family leave and offer training and this, that, and the other. So even though the number we have is really not a full contingency on the job at any given time, because they're all for legal reasons.
If, if officers get hurt, uh, have to have surgery, and I've got one officer right now that's gonna have to have surgery here in the near future, he'll be out for an extended period of time for that. Uh, as you say, if one of them has a newborn child, they have the opportunity to take off for that. So there are, you know, there are things that we have to cover for.
Oh, we've had them this year.
Right.
So I mean, there's no reason to think it's not gonna happen again exactly in the coming year. Well, I mean, you got the money in the budget for it, if you don't have to spend it, you don't have to, but. As far as pulling it out for contingency, that's fine, if you wanna do it, bookkeeping wise, it doesn't matter either. If you put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for expense, you only spend a hundred, you still end up with a hundred and fifty surplus. Whether you have it in your contingency or in the. So either way you wanna do it, that's just fine.
Let's talk about the city attorney, a hundred and fifty thousand, you got a recommendation to pull it down to seventy five? So that's, uh, on page seventeen, I think?
I think we can actually pull it down to sixty, realistically, five thousand, right? Probably maybe a fifteen thousand pushing out there, though, just in case there's some, some project that he needed to do over that, but cut it down.
I would feel more comfortable with seventy five with that.
I said nineteen?
Page seventeen.
And I mean, I, I can see where you, I can see that.
So I got seventy five right now, so you feel like you can do that, any special on the city attorneys from one fifty down to seventy five?
Well, they're gonna take it at seventy five, but they're not gonna.
But they can handle it.
What if we incurred this year, uh, today on any kind of legal stuff, uh, that's outside of? This amended budget says a hundred and fifty, are we actually gonna spend that?
You'll spend it simply because that's how I'm getting paid.
This budget, you're up as the city manager.
In the eighteen nineteen budget, in, but for this fiscal year.
My point is, what's legal, outside legal stuff, you're standing.
Significant outside legal, at the moment, off the top of my head, I can think of roughly, um, we've got the issue with the eminent domain case, and then there's another issue that, um.
Legal matters.
Another legal matter, so right now, right now, since July one of seventeen to this point, we will probably spend ten thousand dollars on outside legal stuff that I have not been able to handle myself.
We've already had that saved until next time, but you've become the attorney, and we, we changed city managers, and you basically took both positions. And we had to pay off the other city manager half the year because of the contract. So we've still saved in this fiscal year, half of her salary plus benefits, is that fair?
That's correct.
All right, so we spent ten this year, you're, you feel good about seventy five versus one fifty, then?
As, as long as we didn't get any, any outside protracted type of legal issue, but.
If it's in contingency.
If it's in, if it's in my contingency fund, then we've got it if we need it.
So that's why we want to push, push it over into contingency, the seventy five K.
I think so.
I, I mean, I don't wanna be the only one talking here, but, uh, city treasurer, I'm looking at this one. Again, my mind goes back to sixteen seventeen actuals, which is three hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars, and now it's, uh, budgeted three eighty five. I think that's forty five thousand dollars that we could topple out.
What page?
Page nineteen. Page eighteen nineteen.
No, page city attorney.
So page nineteen, that near the top, has got the total for that department. So you can see in actuals in sixteen seventeen here, it was three thirty nine, four oh nine. And now the budget recommendation's three eighty five, seven oh four. They actually asked for a lot more than that, but, uh, Brandon's pulled them back. So I'm saying, if they operated and did the job that we need done, sixteen seventeen, why can't they still build it at near that number?
If, if I'm not mistaken, that was the year where she was down at least one person that entire year, isn't it?
There was quite a bit of turnover, and that has stabilized. She would be in full stack, probably the three eighty five is a more accurate number.
The amended budget, I mean, that's what you think the year's gonna end up this year, three eighty five? Somewhere in that range?
The amendment's three seventy three, or seventy eight, I think.
Now, I think eighteen nineteen with, with the V R S increase, I think it will be close, and a tax sale increase, um, based on actuals. Yes, I think, eighteen nineteen, three eighty five.
To me, the, when I look at that, I mean, it's personnel and benefits are big things, rather than that, so I. Uh, and then the other one that jumps out to me is the D and B stock fees, uh, but I would assume there's offsetting revenue.
Yes, we're making money.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's actually a good thing.
Now, sorry, it's the way this is one fifty eight five, and then it jumped all the way up to a two hundred. So that's a stacking change, you're stocking around.
And then the other one that I see that's significant, the D and B stock fees, but to me, that, that's a good thing. Paying that because there's way more offsetting revenue.
Refresh my mind, is this what the city of Bristol, Virginia is actually paying for our constitutional officers? Or is this an aggregate of what we're receiving from the state, plus?
So total outflow of expenditures, further back on, Mr. Flayer, in the actual department statements, we show the local funding.
So this isn't necessarily, this is just the aggregate here, the total. Can you tell me how much we actually, as a city, pay?
Two hundred and fifty two thousand eight oh four. Two fifty two eight oh four is what's budgeted, it's on page ninety nine.
That's what I thought we were looking at, we were, we were looking at crime.
Oh, we're looking at combined, our urban state.
So net local funding in sixteen seventeen year actuals, two twenty, and this budget's saying it's going up to two fifty two.
That's a pretty big one position.
Can you show me where the common attorney's office is, and what we paid the common attorney? I'm, I'm asking her, go ahead, pull it.
Okay, it's on, it's past that, it's, uh.
It's on page one fifteen.
One fifteen?
That's correct.
That's what we actually paid, the four hundred and fifty three thousand, eight hundred and fifty two dollars, is that?
Are you looking at treasurer, common attorney?
I'm looking at common attorney right now.
Uh, wa- bottom of page, two ten, actual, sixteen seventeen was one ninety two, two eighty six. Budgeted seventeen eighteen, two ten, one forty seven, budgeted eighteen nineteen, two twenty three.
So why we gone up on that?
Uh, your increases on your fringe benefits, which increased, um, roughly ten percent.
Which a lot of that's due to the retirement adjustment that everybody gets hit with every year. When they do allow the job of investing money, they gotta make it up from all the cities.
So we had no call or say whenever they decided to position, you know, Bristol's town with less than seventeen, city less than seventeen thousand. And we had no say so when they hired new assistant victim witness coordinator for the city, do we?
According to the comp board, um, well, all that victim witness, from my understanding, that's all flowed through that new, uh, victim witness coordinator, so it's no impact on our budget.
No impact.
No impact, I looked into that back in probably March.
And that's the state mandate as to how many employees each of the.
That's correct.
They have, and if they go over like we have with the sheriff's department, if we go over that state allowed, then we pay the full vote.
That's right.
Salary and fringe.
The comp board has a.
If they stay within the state guidelines, all the pay for is the fringe.
It's amazing to me that, how much our common attorney costs and how many attorneys and so forth, we have staff here compared to what Smith County, which has twice, three times the population, maybe in the county. And, uh, and we're so, we have four attorneys here, just like Smith County has, and I just think that is, uh, it's, it's, it's questionable, especially when you go down and see people that are standing, sitting around in the courts, uh, yeah, I mean, that's.
So that's what makes up that four fifty three, salary ranking, that's about four attorneys?
Well, no, that's, uh, seven total, you've got four attorneys and, uh, three staff members.
Yeah, you got the, you know, three, three secretaries, uh, you got the expense of paying for a rental building that no other common. You got the expense of paying for a rental building that no other common law attorney in southwest Virginia does. They're all part and parcel of living, they inside the courthouse's or city halls and so forth, but no, not Bristol, Bristol's special. At least as far as common law attorney's office, and we paid twenty-seven thousand, so it shows here for lease rental of that building. And I don't know if the state's picking up any tab on that too or not, but it shows twenty-seven thousand going to this building. It used to be the old Tasty Grill down here on, um, you know, they don't advertise where the, the common law attorney's office is, but you know, that's where the common law attorney's office is. And, uh, they didn't even have a paid pardon law. And they get that kinda money. Uh, you know, I think that, uh, we ought to look into and seriously look into, unless there's a lease that prohibits us. Looking into moving that inside of the city halls and so forth and so on, because that money can very much well be spent better. Helping some of our employees and so forth and so on, as opposed to, uh, paying someone for a rental of the building. And, uh, I think we can make room, even if they're not all in the same place, they don't have to, there's phones, something called phones, still have those and so forth, so.
I've done, uh, research this past week on that very issue and, uh, due to some legal issues, I'll reserve that for another time to give you an update on that, please.
I will still have to get into the sheriff's department here since that year.
I said, it's probably worth looking into, I mean, I don't know where, where the space is or what the issues are, but.
Yeah, there's obviously a lease contract in place, but, but you're right. I mean, if you've got room here that they could be versus leasing another building, that makes sense financially, so.
And in particular, if we don't get, if the annex doesn't work out, for instance, uh, you know, with the, with the potential, with the jail having an additional place, right? Those lease department, B I D for that, so, um.
I tend to get that black mold going.
Yeah, but it wouldn't hurt my feelings at all.
Defense attorney.
Just go ahead and, uh, I'll put that back over to the city attorney, because that's the case.
Well, since we've got the sheriff's department here to, to work with this, let's, let's go to the sheriff's budget and talk about that.
Reasonable. I'm, I'm sure Mr. Hutton, Mr. Hutton will stay though after, once you just whisked all the stuff, tells him that is right. Oh, okay.
Which page is it, twenty-nine?
Uh, one twenty-three and one twenty-four.
That was, uh, I think, I don't have any thoughts about.
That's the bird's eye view. Twenty-three or one twenty-four.
So really the big one to talk about is the inmate housing, right?
That's correct. And, um, yeah, part of that inmate housing this coming year, um, three hundred thousand of that nine hundred thousand is basically gonna be set aside for alternative sentencing program. Uh, I will say, we do have a policy now in place. Um, I would love, and I think everybody on our staff would love to take credit for the policy. It's a probably about a twenty-page policy, but, uh, Allison Judge Johnson's secretary worked very diligently the past, uh, two weeks to get that policy in place. Um, so that we can have something to go by. That was presented to us on Thursday, Thursday, I think, Thursday? Yeah. So here's the proposal, we just have it as a program proposal right now. Uh, with that being said, I have to give hats off to the sheriff's department. When we started this discussion back in, uh, probably February or March, we had roughly two hundred and forty inmates, uh, in custody of the Bristol, Virginia sheriff's office. So we had roughly eighty, not maybe, most ninety, ninety inmates in outside jurisdictions. Our sheriff's department has worked tirelessly, looking to make sure that individuals who need to be in DOC custody are getting into DOC custody. And they are doing everything within their power to get inmates back within the city jail. So since that time, they've reduced the number of inmates down by roughly half. So at the moment, we've got forty to forty-two inmates.
What's a half?
Yeah.
Big deal, man.
Where, where did you bust them to? Don't tell.
Thank you, guys.
So they weren't, they weren't two forty, so they, they had a capacity of one fifty, I'm gonna keep my numbers. So that was ninety we were sending out, so they worked it down to, uh, about forty-five or forty now, right? So it's half what it was.
Right.
And that, that number, um, I ran it the other day, that number is three or four hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, it's significant. It's a significant number that they have done.
Which we paid for this program, we're trying to get out here.
And in regards to the program, there is a cost component to the program, so there's gonna be revenue generated from the inmates who take part in this program. So that'll help offset the cost of this program. Basically, what this program is doing is taking the place of drug. And, um, it's, not only is it taking the place of drug court, this will, in my heart of hearts, I hope, will help decrease the poverty rate in the city of Bristol. Simply because when you've got two hundred inmates sitting in jail over there, I would say the vast majority of those folks live in poverty. And if, I've met with a large local business this past week, they are on board for hiring, uh, people that are in this program. So at the moment, they have eight vacancies that they just cannot fill. If they fill a vacancy, something else happens where they have to let someone go, and most of it's due to drug use. Uh, they cannot find, I think you'll find in the manufacturing world, the manufacturing, uh, world, cannot find individuals who've passed drug tests. So this local business is extremely excited about having this program in place, because these individuals will be drug tested. And they'll be drug tested a lot, and that way, if they're going to work, they know that they're gonna be clean. So they're, they're very excited about this opportunity and will give the people an opportunity to work. I think that's gonna be the difference in this program than what you see in other programs across the state. Other programs across the state have yet to materialize, putting an inmate convicted felon with a real job. It's usually community service-like jobs. Here we are actually, we're, we're bridging that gap that has not existed. So once we get that, uh, bridge in place, uh, I think we'll see a significant difference in, uh, recidivism rates and. Uh, people actually making a difference in their own life and their family's lives.
That, that's a huge difference for handout. Instead of get people back on their feet and then setting them outside the door of your business and then you're on your own again, well, they get right back in. This way, you put them into a job that says, hey, I'm gonna stay here.
And they need to get their, I hope there's part of a component to help individuals figure out a way to get their driver's license back too, because that's a big invoice and so forth and so on. It would be people too, that are getting out of the facility or whatever, they don't have a driver's license, they're driving suspended because they haven't been able to pay fines and costs.
Then they get caught again and.
That's right, and it's, it's continual pain. But, but as far as this program's concerned, and I, I talked to someone yesterday about this, uh, in my understanding, the cutoff's gonna be a sentence of eighteen months or less. Is that correct?
I think that's, that's how we're looking at it right now. Um, I think you and I both know that some of these typical drug crimes that we see, your guideline range is probably less than eighteen months on some of them.
And basically.
Depending on what, yeah, unless, you know, there are multiple offender or something of that nature.
Mr. Reed, let me ask you, and I did have a conversation with someone that, that very much in a note with the test of more, maybe be the first implement some of this stuff, so. He said that, uh, first time, he, he doesn't feel like his distributor should be in this. He, or whatever, but I said, well, on a case-by-case basis of your first-time drug offense, you know, selling a pill or to, to someone. And they have no other criminal record, certainly no violence or whatever, that we need to look into that, because you're really talking about, a lot of our people down here. Are first-time drug offenders who basically sold a pill to buy some food, or buy, sold a pill and get pills, you know, for themselves. I mean, it's, it's a, it, we, we can't just narrowly count to just thieves or, you know, we have to, we have to, we're not just users even, you know?
I mean, if you're caught with whatever, two, three, four, you're considered a dealer, right?
Well, you know, and that's kinda stupid, that's kinda stupid. I mean, I think, I mean, and not what you asked me, but I mean, I think that logic has failed in, in twelve. I think if you're caught with five pounds of coke, for instance, I think you're a dealer.
Let me kind of bring us back to the program proposal. At least I have not heard anyone say people convicted of a distribution crime would not be available to this program. I, I have not heard that, and we've sat in this room together for numerous hours over the past couple of months. No one that I've heard, now that may be someone that are not saying it, but I have not heard that, and I would be very disheartened if that was the case. Simply because, as you say, a lot of the individuals we see on the drug crimes are one, two, three pill buys that truly are not what I would consider, and I don't think most people would consider a dealer.
That's not a business.
No, five pounds of coke or, you know, five pounds of marijuana, it's not for personal use, let's get it, if you get caught out here from a truck or something.
So I, you know, in my opinion, and I think, not, not just drug crime, but any crimes on the table, as long as it's not a sex crime or violent crime.
Good.
Uh, if, if we can see that someone has the ability to do something different other than sit in jail, i- it's my opinion, and I, I think Captain will back me up, that. Just about anybody's gonna be eligible for this program.
So this goes beyond this drug use.
This goes beyond drug, I mean, because of, Mark, if you're sitting in there on a theft charge, it's simply probably because of drug, drug use. You just didn't happen to have drugs on you when you got caught that day.
That's right. Mr. Reed, tell me a story to.
Let me say a couple things for you to, um, track here, this, this is a big news item, this is a big deal here. So I was really impressed yesterday with, when we were down here with the meeting that was going on between common law attorney, the sheriff's department, yourself, the right people in the room. And so this is an example of how you solve a problem. So it's going in the right direction, now we're not there, but it's going in the right direction, right? So we gotta, we can't count on chickens before they hatch, right? But I think everybody now understands around the table, it's a significant issue we got facing us with this inmate housing, right? So this community is trying to be the leader to come up with a program that's completely different than anybody's ever tried before. We're trying to get folks back to work, right? And so we've had a private industry in the community to step up and say, hey, I am willing to do that. In fact, I have about eight or ten employees that I can't fill because I can't find people who are drug-free. Well, these folks happen to be already tested and ready to go to work. So we reached out and we reached out to the other manufacturers Friday with an email, and we're gonna propose to them the same thing. So the sheriff's department is predicting that of the population that we're sending out, there's, there's a significant number in there that we can put back to work. So it does two things, it gets their costs down, right, gets them back to work, gets them back in society. So this is a big deal. This could, this could mean a half a million to six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars the other way from where we were, right? Because we were still putting that five hundred thousand even two or three years ago, it had ballooned to about nine hundred. So, so they've got it down now to about, you know, six or seven hundred, so it, it, it's moving the way we need to. So this could really change the landscape of our financial, um, picture.
Obligations, yes.
Our obligations going out the door for this inmate housing. So let me just finish. So the other thing that was discussed, which is some out-of-box stuff, which is where else can we utilize current city assets, right? Current buildings and facilities to help facilitate this program, right? And so we came up with the, with the annex, right? Now, Department of Corrections has looked at it, they thought we could use it, but then they've come back with some changes that need to be made to make it suitable, like. Uh, the water fire extinguisher system, you know, tippies and new codes and buildings and some, some things like that. But, but that's not, that's not a killer. That, that's good, that's good that we've now are identifying a way to use a current asset to completely unload potentially all the inmates that we're sending out at a tremendous cost. So I think now we gotta kinda step up to the bar, so to speak, and say, what, what do we feel good about this budget year that we can pull down the sheriff's department budget? Slide some of it over in contingency to have some monies there to help with the annex of what modifications we need to do, whatever else needs to be supported, right, in the program? Like, um, you know, the work, the people have to have the little trackers, you know, and whatever. So, so those monies need to be available, uh, in order for this thing to be successful. So some of it could be savings, right, some of it we could pull down the budget to actually save the expense, because we've already got the inmate down quite a bit. Some of it needs to scoot over to have some monies available to do that. So that's what I'm interested in hearing, is how this council, you wanna take that?
Here's, here's what I would propose. Out of the nine hundred thousand, I'm not looking at the rest of the sheriff's department's budget, because in regards to that, I don't think there's much else to change. But in regards to the nine hundred thousand, three hundred thousand needs to be set aside for the alternative sentencing program. Now, in regards to the annex, sheriff has been very diligent about trying to get DOC to get in to our jail, to look at our jail, to see exactly what the lifespan of our jail can be. And things that we need to do to ensure that we do have some sort of lifespan with it. Um, I would estimate this can cost us seven hundred thousand dollars. I don't wanna get into the specifics, but just say seven hundred thousand dollars to come up with the current jail. Now, to make it up to where we need it to be, where the sheriff feels comfortable. I think, um, a hundred thousand dollars will need to be set aside for the annex in order to get it up to where it needs to be. Because as it stands right now, DOC came and looked at it, we can probably put nineteen to twenty-three inmates in that annex. If we put nineteen to twenty-three inmates in that annex, that brings us down another nineteen to twenty-three inmates to be in, in the outside jurisdictions. So that's roughly a hundred and eighty thousand dollar savings by bringing twenty people into manning. Um, so we need to do some things to get that an- annex in compliance with DOC. And I think that would roughly cost us maybe a hundred thousand, probably a little bit less, but I think a hundred thousand would be a fair number. So out of the nine hundred thousand we have set aside right now, I would flip off from saying three hundred needs to be set aside for the alternative sentencing program. And a hundred thousand needs to be set aside strictly for annex.
Mr. Reed, something, uh, it's something that hasn't been talked about. You, you know, you eliminated three parks and recreation employees on this year's budget. Well, from my understanding, and you're trying to correct me if I'm wrong, individuals will be offered, even if they don't have a job per se, they will be able to work for our city.
Yes, and so individuals that are really looking at probably coming for our city, or will be people on pre-trial release, or for people that have yet to be sentenced. Uh, they can come in, they can work for us, uh, we need, mo, whatever we need done, they can do. So when you see contract labor set aside for parks and rec, public works, there's gonna be a component to that that's already gonna be saved, simply because we're gonna have inmates ready to go to take care of some of those problems. And if that's the case, and it works, it's gonna be, that's on top of savings that we haven't yet realized. And if, if all this works according to plan, uh, you know.
Yes, that always happens in Bristol.
Yeah, it, uh.
Bristol's never made plans, didn't come out.
This, this sounds good, though.
This is truly a financial game changer for the city. When you're looking at a savings of roughly six hundred thousand dollars a year, that's twenty-five percent of what we need to get, to get through our debt service payment in twenty twenty-two. And that's huge, um, that we can set aside for debt service payment in the future.
Is it even feasible? I mean, we may have someone as a sheeting, we probably.
Sheet rock?
Sheet, no, not, well, sheet rock and also sheet air, heat and air kinda people?
There's plenty, I mean, there's, you know, who knows what we have over there, I mean, he could probably speak, but I mean, we do have talented.
We used to have a lot of good brick masons and, you know, people like that.
Talented individuals that we.
Very talented.
But now, let me, let me just say.
And use those to fix the annex potentially.
Let me, let me get along with your side of the real quick.
Okay.
Before we. Uh, assuming, no, assuming we still have forty inmates outstanding that can't go anywhere else, assume the alternative sentencing program fails. That's roughly five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that is needed to cover inmate housing and outside jurisdictions. So that's the worst-case scenario at forty inmates. We know what the worst-case scenario is, uh, uh, ninety inmates, that's close to a million dollars. But if we can keep things as they are right now, it's five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that we have to come up with in order to cover inmate housing. That's the worst-case scenario.
I think we need a nice thank you letter to Allison in Judge Johnson's office from, signed by the mayor and said, manager, appreciate her hard work. Because I was in there one day, and she said that she was working on that and so forth, and obviously she's done a heck of a job, and I think just, I know you verbally appreciate, send your appreciations, and everybody can, but I think it'd be nice to have something like that.
I'll take care of that.
All right, so we'll, we'll come back to the numbers again, with all that budget. So we had in the budget, nine hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Which if you divide by fourteen thousand dollars a person, that's about two hundred and fourteen inmates that had to go out, you know, minus one fifty, that's, that's the expense to send them out, right? So they're now down to about a hundred and eighty-three, I think, was the take yesterday. So the difference between two fourteen and one eighty-three is about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars roughly, right? So you said you'd have to have about three hundred put in contingency and about a hundred for annex, so that pretty much takes up that four thirty-four. So is that what you're saying, so let's slide that over?
That's what I would recommend to Allison.
Alright, so then the challenge, the sheriff's department is how, how far down from one eighty-three can, do we think we can really go? You know, one sixty-five, one sixty-eight, how many, how many more can we garner on the work release and, and so forth to get the cost coming down even further?
Well, and I, I think, you know, I don't wanna say anything that. Well, and I, I think, you know, I don't wanna say anything that he wouldn't agree with, but, um, it's not just the sheriff that's gonna be making the decision. I mean, a lot of the support system, the sheriff's just gotta do what the support system says to do. And in my heart of hearts, I feel like we can truly get this number down. Uh, our goal is to have forty-five people in this program, so if we have forty-five people in this program, that means we have roughly a hundred and forty-five people in the jail. Uh, so that's the first year goal, is to get forty-five people in this program. I think we'd get more into that program if it's not a goal, but...
So you think of the one eighty-three, there's about forty-five people there that would qualify for the program?
There's probably more that would qualify the program. Um, it...
So I'm gonna challenge the team to keep doing what you're doing, but we need every person that's qualified, you know, to have a place.
Well, that's my goal. I mean, you know, I wanna get down to a hundred and twenty in the jail. I mean, really, what I'd like to get down is another one in the jail, because I think we're doing something right as a community, and we've got people jobs and doing exactly what they need to be, we're taking care of the elderly, we have a pandemic, and we're doing everything that we should be doing as a community, as an organization.
Okay, because we're gonna find a position for everyone that's fucking talented, they're out there.
My God, I'm saying.
They're absolutely out there. So I'm not worried about finding a position. We've gotta take the hundred and eighty-three you got today and see how far down you can pull it with the qualified people that go put to work. We will find a place and want. So, but for this budget cycle, are we saying we wanna kinda stop at this, uh...
Leave it as is.
Leave it as is and scoop that money over and let it carry on development?
Here's what I, here's what I would suggest. Instead of putting that in contingency, I know what four hundred thousand of that's for. We leave it in that line item, um...
Basically for that expense.
It's for that expense. If you wanted to do anything, you would take a hundred thousand out and you would put it over into, uh, City Manager. Maintenance of building and property for the Sheriff's Department of, uh, that way we can, that money's already budgeted with, uh, fixing that annex. That's what I would suggest doing, and leave, that would leave you eight hundred thousand in inmate housing.
What, what'd you say you're predicting the annex is?
It costs a million. I'm gonna say a hundred thousand. I mean, it could be a little more, it could be less, but I think that would give us a good start.
We've gotta get it functional where Department of Corrections can...
I think, I would hope so. Do you think that's fair to say based on...
This will be more designed for minimum security, though. It's not designed for anyone that, I mean, really...
Our trustees, we would move trustees over into the annex, and then we can bring other individuals back.
And we need to find the team of people that can do that work to help save on a hundred thousand. I'm sure we can do that.
Right.
There's a lot of people in this community that install these things that they're needing in industrial sites and everywhere that are all certified and qualified. So let's talk about that before we just go, you know, spend the money.
No, I mean, I think what we need to do, we need to go on really a big public relations push and asking for, uh, individuals in the community that are skilled in HVAC, skilled with fire sprinkling systems, to come in, give us your best deal. And not only does it help you and your business, but it'll help the community as a whole, and I think we...
Would there be state grants available?
Uh, that's something we'll have to look at to see what grants would be available.
And would we have to complete one of those studies I know before there was...
Not, not for this purpose, we're not. No, we have, we have to give them a plan and why we're doing it, but it's...
You don't have to go through the two part.
Right. So if, what I would do, I would just move one hundred thousand from inmate housing, and I'll move it down to account thirty-three oh one oh hyphen thirty-three ten. Knowing that that's for the annex.
And they get detoxed too for thirty days, I understand. You might have to be incarcerated for a period of time, or whatever it is.
Some will, some won't. It just depends on the person. Like, if someone gets on pre-trial release, and they're doing their drug tests, and they're out here weeding for us for a period of six months before they get sentenced, you know, I or whoever has been supervising them can write a letter to the judge and say, "Look, Johnny Smith's been doing great, showing up to work, you know, consider him for something other than incarceration."
Right off the bat.
Right off the bat.
And not everybody's gonna have talent to do anything. That's why they're in jail also. They didn't go to school.
Yeah, but you know, most people, I'd say, most people that we interviewed together with this manufacturing job, I mean, they're not, they all gotta be trained.
Oh, that part of manufacturing.
You're getting people that haven't been in jail that still don't have the skill sets. You gotta, if you, if you got a good person, a drug through, you can get them trained. You can get them trained to do what you need to do. That's, that, we do that all the time.
No, I'm not saying we can't train people. I'm just saying not all of them are gonna be trained, just like we're never gonna have...
Oh, I'm going. We'd be lucky if we get a H, H V A P man in there.
Have the skill set.
Be lucky.
All right, so is that it on the inmate jail entry thing else?
I think that covers us on the jail at this point. I will say the architect for the DOC said the jail probably has a lifespan at the end of fifteen years, um, which is, uh, I wouldn't say great, but it's better than, better than having a lifespan of nothing.
All right, so one or two things this morning. One thing the community, everybody needs to understand, there's, there's an inmate population that's gotta still go down and down and down before we're even to a point really where the regional jail becomes a financial break even. So that's, that's one thing to understand, right? But we're going in that direction. But if we wanna keep the jail, we wanna keep things in our control, then we gotta put the capital necessary to get the jail fixed. Uh, so we need to talk about at some point, this budget cycle, like the next budget cycle, recruiting some reserve capital, restricted funds, right? That we start to set aside those capital funds there for that purpose, right? So we don't kick that can down the road, and we build that up so they can take care of the hot water and all the stuff at the jails needs to be done. So we'll have to create that list, right, with some numbers, and we start putting that aside. That's, that's one example. Fire Department's got the same thing, a big truck. You gotta plan for that. You gotta put those monies there, add them there, and then when it shows up, you got the money to pay for it.
And if the alternative sentencing program works, that's six hundred thousand that can automatically go to fixing some of those big issues in the jail. And we can see it's working this year. We can go ahead and start on some of those projects later in this year as we see this program, uh, working. So I mean, that's six hundred thousand dollars that we can say is gonna go directly to the jail in order to keep it functional for extended period of time.
You said ten to fifteen years?
That's correct.
Is that as is, or is that with certain modifications?
I think that would be as is.
That, uh, the architect came down from Richmond, and, uh, that was his suggestion, uh, as is, ten, fifteen more years of life.
So you might, if you did certain modification, you might could extend that building a little longer, I mean, before the total reconstruction.
Right. There, uh, you know, we have no cooling system in jail, so at some points, you know, sometime, the temperature back there gets up to a hundred and ten degrees. And, uh, Sheriff wants to, you know, he's not here today, so it's very technical, but, uh, his concern is we're gonna lawsuit away. Someone dies from heat stroke or whatever, uh, you know, and that's what...
But I think we could touch here. Those things kinda be the monthly, immediate things that's gotta be fixed, like the air conditioner and so forth. And, you know, that's a good example, because I'm in the air conditioning business. You know, there are companies out there that will donate that equipment. That's a tax write-off for that purpose. So we, that's the avenue we need to go down, right? We gotta have to go buy the equipment, right? We just need somebody to spec it out, so we understand the tonnage, what you need, and then we can put a, you know, communication out, and we get these good companies that, you know, they have test, they have test equipment all the time. They, they scrap it. They, they throw it away. I mean, you'd be surprised how much money's thrown away. So what, that can solve that, that expense in a different way, right? That's what we gotta talk about. So we just need to know what they need, and then we'll figure out the best way to get those, those things done. All right, would I ask anything else on the jail? Be job, guys.
Thank you for the job. Thank you all.
I wanna get your, what are we doing back to school? Three hundred dollars.
All right, you ready to go to schools?
I'm ready to go to schools.
He's a little... I know, what you... Am I late? I'm going to school. Aren't you fine? Are you fine?
I'm fine.
I'm fine. George is fine, so it's good.
No, I'm really, I'm good.
Nays, thank you.
You what?
Nays.
I think, yeah, take care, brother.
All right, on the schools, just tell us what you're paying the, like, you just organized.
Uh, we're gonna, we start, we start on overheads or in the budget?
Budget. Let's get to the budget.
If you will look on page...
Tenders, one forty-four on expenditure.
Yes. So as you can see, um, it's account sixty-one oh one oh. School transfers over the past, uh, sixteen seventeen was roughly, uh, seven million dollars. Uh, we budgeted seventeen eighteen six point nine million, and this year we're budgeting six point eight six, six point six eight six million, which is a, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar reallocation of funds from the seventeen eighteen original budget.
What happened in sixteen seventeen, the school had seventy-five thousand dollars that they didn't need, so to speak. And so they returned it to the city, and we then awarded it to them in the seventeen eighteen year. So that's where they're coming up with the three hundred thousand dollars. The two twenty-five is the actual number, but the wild seventy-five thousand that the school gave us in the, excuse me, sixteen seventeen year that we awarded to them in seventeen eighteen. So they gave us that money. Obviously, it's in their budget for expenditure, so as far as they're concerned, they're seeing a three hundred thousand dollar shortfall.
Well, let's talk about one thing that came up before we get into the school. Um, and I don't remember who brought this up, it came up in our discussions about. School systems require you pay tuition, um, if you live outside the school district. But if you live outside the school district, you're, you're not a taxpayer inside the school district. So if you come into the school district with your kid, you gotta pay tuition, right? And tuition rate barriers have been over, you know, around Tennessee side or whatever. So did we ever get information of what tuition rate and how many students in our population are not paying tuition?
Yes, we did. We did. There's fifty-seven students that are within the city of Bristol schools that are from outside other jurisdictions, from other jurisdictions.
And they paid nothing in tuition?
Uh, pay you a hundred dollars, and if you're out of state, you pay two hundred dollars.
Right. So, um, and then if you have, if you're an employee in the school system, you do not pay anything.
Was that reported? I mean, I'm sure that's a benefit, and, and it's not making out bigger than this, but that should be reported on something.
I think that would be a question for the school to answer.
All right, so we ask this again. So your understanding is that fifty-seven people are students that come into our school system from outside the district, uh, do not pay any tuition at all, or they pay a hundred dollars?
Depending on, and I don't have that breakdown, but if you're from out, if you're out of state, you pay a two hundred dollar tuition.
It's a market slave or not.
Yeah, I mean, it's not significant, and if you're coming in state.
And what does the state allow? What does the state tenure allow, uh, you to charge tuition? What's their, uh...
Reversion.
They're gonna merge, I see.
Well, now, the state, okay, so you got three components that make up your school funding, local, state, and federal. The state funds you based on the number of students in your school system. They don't care where your student is from. So those fifty-seven students are allocated, uh, roughly six thousand dollars from the state.
Each?
Each. Now, locally, basically, there is no, basically, the locality is paying for fifty-seven students that are coming from outside of jurisdiction, because we're having to eat that cost, uh, and then spread out amongst, you know, the rest of the students.
I estimate it was like twenty-nine hundred and seventy-five dollars somewhere in that neighborhood per student is what we're paying.
But the locals are paying?
Well, the fiscal year seventeen, uh, locality is twenty-seven twenty-five that we pay per pupil. So twenty-seven twenty-five times fifty-seven students is a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars that the locality is paying for other, uh, stu, paying for students from outside jurisdictions.
Wait a minute. The citizens of Bristol, Virginia are paying for people from Tennessee, or Scott County, or Washington County? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. And if you look at Bristol, Bristol, Tennessee schools, I think their tuition rate is eight to nine thousand dollars per student that's coming into their system, uh, from outside jurisdictions.
So they're getting a gain, though, from the state, at least, to a certain extent, you can look at it like that. Uh, even though they get six thousand to every student, including local students, I guess they're looking at like, well, that twenty-nine hundred we can eat because we're still getting the gain from the state of that amount of money.
Right.
But realistically, now this has come up and kinda dawned on me, then the school system has a responsibility to not let this fall on the localities, I would say. The school system shouldn't let this fall on localities for people that come from out of other jurisdictions. If there's a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that these people can, you know, be billed for and so forth and so on, and should be billed for, especially if you're out of state of Tennessee, I mean, you know, I mean, it'd be nice if Tennessee decided they were gonna fund them, but they don't do that. Then, you know, part of that three hundred thousand dollars comes right out of that, one hundred and fifty-five thousand. I mean, you make that three hundred thousand, they need up real quick by just simply going out here and making these people pay tuition. That's just common sense, because otherwise you'd really take advantage of the people in the city of Bristol, Virginia. I mean, I...
That's what I'm trying to get my mind around. I'm not quite there yet, though. So the fifty-seven students, right? Is that count, that, those are included as a pool of students that the state...
That's correct.
And that, so the state already sends us, how much for each one of those?
Roughly six thousand for all those students.
Six thousand dollars total for first students?
Per student.
So without them in the system, they, we will lose that six thousand.
Well, we lose it, but you wouldn't necessarily have those students either. So I mean, they're funding you based on number of students. The state says you've got two thousand students in your system. We don't care where they're from. We're giving you six thousand dollars for those two thousand students. Now, the question is, out of those two, that, two thousand students, how many of them are truly Bristol, Virginia jurisdiction students? So we'll just round off for easy numbers. Nineteen hundred and forty out of that two thousand are Bristol, Virginia students. So now the locality is paying for not, not only those nineteen hundred and forty that are true Bristol, Virginia students, we're also paying the, for the additional sixty that are not part of Bristol, Virginia's school system.
But since the state is paying us a profit on those students, it takes the pressure off of the locality in the sense that the school doesn't have to ask for even more money than they normally ask for.
That's correct, except for the fact they could ask for less from the locality if they would charge the tuition rate of the, what we're paying per pupil. So instead of us paying, uh, twenty-seven twenty-five per pupil, that tuition could be charged as a tuition rate, uh, for out of jurisdiction students.
And it's absolutely unfair, I mean, if someone is out of state or out of a location, that, because they happen to have a teacher that teaches, I don't think that's appropriate to discriminate against the individual that comes in here. I mean, it's just a hundred, two hundred bucks, but, you know, a hundred, two hundred bucks, two hundred bucks, a hundred bucks. And, uh, so that policy needs to change.
So are we the only, are we the only municipality that does the school board doing one?
Now, in Virginia, it appears that Virginia's, uh, fairly liberal, and at least the school boards in Virginia are fairly liberal when it comes to charging tuition, at least in southwest Virginia. Uh, you really don't see much of a, what I would consider a tuition for an out of jurisdiction student. Uh, most localities waive it or charge an nominal fee, like a hundred or two hundred dollars. So if a student from Bristol goes into Washington County, you know, there would be an nominal fee for that, nothing, nothing significant. They find, Washington County's in the same boat that we're in, so now Washington County's gonna get an extra six thousand dollars from the state for one of our students being in their, in their locale, in their local schools. And then we'll lose that six thousand.
Now, many of our students that live in the city actually go to the county schools?
Um, I had that discussion with Dr. Perry, and I can't remember off the top of my head. It wasn't, uh... I, I wanna say it almost offset the fifty-seven that we have coming in.
Now, would, would those have been similar to us employees that, that live in the city, but they work in, say, for Washington County schools? So they're bringing their children there?
Right.
That's beautiful.
Yeah, I mean, that part, to me, you know, I realize it's a benefit, but I can see why, because we have teachers that get there early in the morning and call after school programs and stuff, uh, why they would bring their children there. So I don't know how much help we use as that number. I remember talking to Mr. Wingard. His daughter had to pay nine thousand dollars, and, uh, she didn't do it, but she was, that's what she exploded. Nine thousand dollars to go to Tennessee schools, uh, that's kinda...
Yeah, five thousand on my daughter.
Really? To Tennessee?
I moved them into Tennessee back in that year.
I mean, it just seems like it'd be reasonable that we do what some, you know, Tennessee schools do. I mean, you know, and if they're, come and have kids from over here, and we don't...
I don't know if their state does the same as we do.
I don't think, I don't think it's funded the same, but I think one thing that the school system could look at is how can they make up the difference in the locality piece, uh, on a per student? And I'm not advocating one way or the other. When you're looking at numbers, the locality is eating a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for students who do not live within Bristol, Virginia.
It'd be nice if they paid some, I mean, realistically, a... It'd be nice if they paid something, I mean, realistically, a thousand dollars, maybe split the way to somewhere and see if they could do that, and if they funded some things with that money, perhaps, uh, I don't know. Well, here's where I have, have, have an issue. And, and the numbers are always skewed. Depends on who you ask and how they're feeling that day, I guess. But if the school system has a twenty-seven million dollar budget, and they have twenty-two hundred and fifty students, and you divide that, that comes to twelve thousand dollars per child to educate inside the city schools. Now, the state gives six thousand, so that's half. Now, the federal government gives a little portion, I don't, I'm not sure what that is, and then the rest falls onto the locality.
Okay, uh, for the city of Bristol, the state gives five thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars in fiscal year seventeen, and the feds gave one thousand five hundred and two dollars per student. So, that's closer to sixty-five hundred per student. And then you also have a state sales tax, which is eleven hundred and ninety-five dollars goes to each student. So, total that's given through these, uh, different funding sources is ten thousand nine hundred and one dollars.
Okay.
Which is, I mean, based on your number from Mr. Wingard, that's, I mean, that's close when you just divide it out per student.
So, the, the state and the federal and all the taxes that's kicked back is totaling ten thousand nine hundred and ten?
And one dollar, ten thousand nine, nine oh one.
Nine oh one, okay.
That's fiscal year seventeen.
Okay, and it's estimated that we're paying local per child is twenty-nine hundred?
Twenty-seven, twenty-five.
Twenty-seven.
That was this week. All these numbers are giving you is fiscal year seventeen, that's most of the data. And this is directly from the Department of Education website superintendent.
Exactly.
And the, if you're.
So, that's coming up to thirteen thousand six twenty-six per pupil?
No, twenty-seven, twenty-five is included in that ten thousand nine oh one.
Okay, twenty-seven, twenty-five is included.
So, twenty-seven, twenty-five plus your fifteen hundred federal, plus your five thousand. Say, five thousand, fifty-four hundred.
Five thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars state, and then there's eleven hundred and ninety-five dollars from state sales tax.
Okay, now, but you take the twenty-seven million, I mean, the, uh,
Well, and what's not, what's not included in these numbers is your debt service. So, remember, there's about eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars in debt service that's, uh, involved as well. So, when you're taking that twenty-seven million and you need to back off roughly nine hundred thousand dollars, which would take you down to about twenty-six million.
Do you have the slides again that the superintendent showed us? They showed a total that had to break down into federal, state, and local?
Uh, I, I do. I don't have, uh, I don't know if there's an easy way to get it up there.
It's gotta be pretty close, because if you're getting ten back from all sources, then you need another, oh, you said the twenty-seven we were producing was already in that ten back.
Right, it is.
Twenty-six and two thousand dollars on per student they had to pay. If it's costing twelve thousand.
How is that possible?
Well, there's something.
There's administrative expenses that, you know, you gotta back out debt, and we back out capital projects too. You back up capital projects, debt, um, there's, there's about four or five items you've gotta back out of that number on that per pupil. So, that's gonna make up that difference between that ten thousand nine oh one and the twelve thousand, whatever that number is. So, you gotta back that out of that budget number.
Can you just read the, if you'll go through that again?
Um, go through what I just said, or go through this?
That one.
Okay. Um, for state revenue for, well, the budget request for this current upcoming year is twenty-seven point two million dollars. State revenue, uh, grant offset is two point six nine million dollars. That was an increase of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, uh, for this past year. Uh, state revenue SOQ, give me a second, I'm trying to pull up on email so that we can get it up on the screen. That way everybody's looking at the same thing. Uh, yeah, copies will be included. Um, if they're getting ready to email. If Colton or he makes the copies, I don't know if I have that presentation in my email probably.
Well, this is absolutely useful information that we're not going to continue to wear in this year, though.
Right.
And that's, this kind of stuff should happen, or needs to happen now, so we can have ready for next year. I think the issue is that all.
That'd be the better show this year, right? Choose the state fair.
And so, yeah, it's.
Oh, yeah, the funding for this year.
It's funding for this year. That's right.
Well, I thought we were trying to, I don't know what we're trying to do, really, then, find out what the tuition.
Some of that's cash, and some of that's not really operational expenses.
Right.
If, if we're gonna talk about moving expenses one way or another, some of that you can't really, it's, it's on an operating.
Okay, okay. There's, it should be a slide right before that, too, uh, that one right there. Thanks, Rick. So, you can see from this slide here, uh, with the total state revenue, it's increased to nine hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Alright, so what's going to, so total budget for the school is now up, you know, from last year.
Right.
Twenty-six point six million, twenty-seven point two million.
That's correct.
It's up by almost six hundred thousand.
Yes.
So, the state portion is up from six point two million, six point one nine four, to seventeen point one, up to, up nine hundred and forty thousand. So, that's real dollars that's up, right, from. So, one thing I'll just be open about, and when people talk about cut, I got really confused. That's not a cut.
Alright.
That's up in dollars, right? That is absolutely an increase in dollars from prior year. So, terminology is not correct when we're talking about cuts. That is not a cut. That is an increase in funding, right? I just wanna make sure we're all transparent, on all the same page.
It's a total increase, but it's a reduction in local.
It's a total increase.
So, local funds would be cut.
The total dollars are up.
Total, right, yeah. But, I mean, it depends.
If you're getting a thousand dollar check from all sources in total, and you get eleven hundred dollars, and your total intake is up, right?
But, but it is a decrease, it's a cut in local fund.
It is a cut in local funding only, but the local funding comes back to the state's index, which says you're a poor community. So, we expect we're gonna have to pick up more of that, because you're a community that can't fund yourself, and you don't have the ability to pay. That's why that index is there. That's the purpose of that index. So, I'm trying to understand that and be really unbiased about this. So, I'm getting really confused when people are talking about a cut, when the state actually does an index and says, we're gonna give you funds based on our calculation of your ability to pay for your education. So, our index changed. Now, it went in a direction where the state actually increased our funding, right? Is that true?
That's correct.
Alright, so I just want everybody to be factual here. So, you can look at it any way you want to and spin it, but I'm just trying to stay factual about it.
Basically, what the problem is, they can't, they want to use that three hundred thousand to apply to the school, the new school. That's where, that, that's ultimately where the three hundred thousand's going. They've already allocated the nine hundred for school operations. If we take away the three they wanna put in reserve, then their contention might as well, we'll have to cut some programs we plan. But, if they don't have that reserve in the first place, then they're not ousted anything and leave the nine hundred thousand they got from the state, leave it in the program. What we have to tell the school system is, are we behind them building a new school now? And if we say no, they have no reason for the three hundred thousand dollars.
What was the two hundred and forty-seven thousand?
Uh, the two forty-seven coming in another year and a half or two. So, and that was, I've, I've been told by the superintendent that they're counting on that two hundred and forty-seven in addition to this third.
And I would like to say. The superintendent and I think the entire community was well aware that that two forty-seven was come back to the city in order to make up the difference in debt.
Yeah, that's what we were told. So, that didn't mean anything to the school. They're still accounting on getting that money to make their plan work.
Well, even the two forty-seven, two hundred is now down to zero, because the, the capital project that was funded, which was to.
Airman, yeah.
It, it's back in our budget now. The two forty-seven, two is back in our budget.
That's because it's complete.
That's right.
So, that, that capital project's done.
That expense went away, so now it's back up.
Which that, that all, that always happens when a capital project is done, and then it goes to a standard year, so that's, that's complete, okay.
So, then, what you can see, the federal funding, uh, this coming year, uh, decreased by roughly sixty-two thousand five hundred. And then, of course, the city appropriation for operations, they requested level funding. They did not request the two hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred, and they, um, there's other local funds, five hundred, five thousand, they, they give.
Of course, also, what isn't showing in that school budget is the resource officers that we put in the schools for additional policemen, but it's the one that we used to have.
Right.
That's, that's not even showing up as a contribution to the schools, when in reality, that's where they're going.
That's correct. Because we gotta pay to those school resource officers, because they have grants.
And that's going in this year, this year?
I think we have grant one more year, if I'm not mistaken, and so nineteen, twenty's gonna have to pick up.
So, then we gotta, do you think we're gonna be able to take four resource officers out of schools? I don't think so. I won't be here, but I'll come down and screen.
Why is the grant, why is the grant expiring with everything that's going on in the?
Well, and that's the way that it's, it's not saying that they won't reopen a grant, but years ago, when they put this school resource officer thing in place, that was one way to, uh, incentivize localities in order to have school resource officers, is we'll pay for it for X number of years, but you all have to pick it up after that. If you choose to pick it up. Right, for one year, you have to pick it up, and then you can either let the school resource officers go, or you, uh, budget for it yourself.
So, is that an increase then, uh, for this year or next year?
There's, it would be for next year, budget.
And it won't show up on these numbers.
It's not showing up in these numbers.
Right.
And that projection's four?
It'd be four, I mean, if we keep it as it is, it would be four.
So, that's.
The four thousand.
Right, I see. So, that's another expense we're gonna get, we need to keep that. I mean, that's ridiculous now that we've, all the school shootings and all that going on. I wouldn't wanna be on council saying, well, we don't need any schools.
You'll never hear me say that anymore. I mean, you know, the resource officers are.
So, that money's a guaranteed expense. They want another two forty-seven guaranteed, because without it, they can't do the school. They need the three hundred thousand, without it, they can't do the school. So, what's the answer? Me, I'm sorry as a you-know-what. But finances do not speak well for new schools this time. Now, the city starts booming in other areas that we're not aware of at this point. It can always come back. That partnership thing is always gonna be available. They're not gonna take it away if we don't do it this year.
Well, I think timing's everything on any kind of big project like the school. And I'm not, I'm not for it or against it. I'm gonna be, I'm just gonna tell people I'm against it until I understand it, though. And I don't understand at this point. I understand we're going after a private public partnership, right? But like I said earlier, we've not looked at all the other options. Until we look at the other options, I'm a no vote, right? I'm just telling you, I'm a no vote on a new school until we look at all the financial options.
I'm just looking at.
Because I'm sitting here looking at, at all the data from these schools, sh, shown me, everything is underutilized, and it has been tremendously underutilized, right? And so, I think there's other things we can do, and actually, to enhance the education. I mean, I'm just telling you, I'll be fully transparent about it. When you look at how the state funds the standardized testing, right? Schools in this facility do better depending on which school you're talking about, right? And guess which ones do the best on the standardized testing? Right? The ones that have the higher student-to-teacher ratios, the ones at Van Pelt. They're doing really well at their standardized testing, right? Third, fourth, and fifth grade, right? So, you can't say that lower student ratios help the kids testing, because that, let me finish. Because that, that says just the opposite. So, I'm, I'm trying to be really unbiased about it and understand it. So, Van Pelt and a lot of their grades are sitting there at twenty-two to one, twenty-four to one ratio, right? Harlem used that at thirteen, fourteen, sixteen to one. You know, Stonewall, C C, these other schools have really got low ratios, right, compared to Van Pelt, which means these other schools are underutilized. So, how can we help those students, right, put them in a, in a better classroom, a better scenario, right, to get their standardized testing up, right? That, to me, is the most important thing, for them to get a better education now. It's not necessarily, in my opinion, building a new school, right? Building a new school is one thing to do, right? But, but that's not necessarily the right thing today. And I'm not against a new school, but timing's everything on a new school, right? So, let me tell you another community, and I've told them this twice now, that, I'm not gonna mention the name of the community. They got out of box, and they got a private company to step in and give a scholarship program to every single student. And they said, if you go Cape, Detroit, and if you graduate through this school system, we will give you a, a one hundred percent tuition, all paid, at any, at any university in the entire country, right? And you know what happened to that community? Everybody moved in. Real estate values went up, real estate taxes went up. They were able to build a new school. The graduation rate went up. The education test scores went up, and everything went the other direction, it's something nobody ever tried before. Nobody ever even talked about that. You know, that's an option that, we've gotta look at those kinds of options when we're talking about education. It's not just about building a new school. Because at the end of the day, I hope everybody understands, a new school means there's gonna be a staff reduction. If you're not gonna get a new school and keep the same admin staff and the same teacher staff that's out there today, because if you think it's true, you're not looking at facts. And, and either you're not being told that now, because that's, that's what's gonna happen, right, at the end of the day. So, there's a lot more to talk about on this new school than this current budget cycle. And so, we're not ready, in my opinion, for a new school at all.
I was just saying, when you look at the teacher ratios, that if you compare Van Pelt, Harlem View, I think, you know, you're looking at one that's probably a very high poverty school. So, you're gonna have lower teacher ratios, because there's a lot that goes into that to help get those kids ready. And, and, you know, Harlem View's Title I, and I know that has an impact on the ratios as well. So, I think that's kind of comparing apples and oranges.
I don't think so. I don't agree with this agreement.
Wow, that's.
I've seen, I've seen cases where you take a poverty-stricken area, you take some people that didn't have the advantages that the other people had, you move them into the advantaged group of people, and actually, their education rates go up, because now they're around people that, that have had different, uh, experiences through life. So, if you, the worst thing you do is you pocket this group over here by themselves that's in a poverty community and say, well, we're just gonna keep it that way, and not put them with the others that are in the affluent community. So, I don't agree with that statement. You know, it, it's just, it's just not, you're not spending any money. I've been there and seen it firsthand, so this is gonna be, this is gonna be a debate. I'm just telling you. And I came on this council for two reasons. I wanted to get this city in a financial position so we could go forward. And I said, I support education all day long, I love it. But timing's everything. We've gotta make sure we, we utilize the current assets properly before we step off into another project, like a new school, and then we wake up and it's gonna be, people start calling that fall's number two, okay? Because we didn't think through it, we didn't debate it from all sides of the root issue. We didn't talk about it in all the right ways, right? Because if we talk about it in all the right way, we'll get the best answer. But just to say it's a new school, private public partnership, there's no way that that's the right discussion right now. And I'm a no vote until we have the right discussion.
Well, I'll say this much, uh, whenever I solve these, these issues today, this.
Well, I say this much, uh, we're not gonna solve these issues today, this, I don't think collectively, which is solve the problem with this school having test scores that does and so forth and so on, but I do think we, we know where the issues are. I still think we're gonna have to come back before, not maybe come back, but we're just wanting to visit the fact that we may be in a real significant budget crunch in this city, even with how you guys are staying budgeted, unless we bite the bullet on something else. I mean, I know it's, it's a balanced budget. We've got a few places that we can knock some stuff off, but we're talking potentially some significant, down for shortfall in, in revenue and so forth and so on, and we can't tax in the middle of the year. So what we do, if we fall short, the way we're trying to structure it right now, right now, and everybody keep this in mind when we meet again, in my opinion, the only way to remedy it, if they, if they have a significant revenue shortfall, which I happen to believe is going to happen, is how many people you're gonna lay off? Because that's the only alternative you're gonna have at that point.
Right. Well, I'm gonna cut to the chase, if this school, if this school budget, or if it's true, that's what I think, is that money is really for this new school thing? I'm gonna sit here and tell everybody, the budget is the budget, we have the money, we have the money to do what they wanna do with this new project. Once we get to that discussion, once all the information's there, we all get to see it, it's not that we don't have three hundred thousand dollars, you know? That's not a true statement.
That's not the end of it.
So the money's there, so we set a budget right now for what we know and where we're going. So I think, in my opinion, the three hundred thousand stays out, right? And then when we get more information, when the school system has done their process, right, and they approach us, we're gonna discuss and figure out if, where the money has to come from. So I think the money needs to be set aside, I think it needs to be pushed over into a contingency for the other things that we noticed in here might come up.
It's already out of budget.
Huh?
I say it's out of budget and been absorbed. It's been absorbed. I mean, you can still come up with the money later on, once you see-
Well, I guess I said we'll do it back in, is what I'm saying, we don't put it back in.
One or two years isn't gonna kill the new school.
Again, we've already found some other opportunity though.
Right.
But I say that's, that's just, again, opportunity we skewed over here of these contingencies because I'm still uncomfortable looking in the mirror saying we, the risk, we're risk-free, but we're not.
No, no.
I, I still wanna talk about, uh, the twenty-six million divided by two hundred, twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty students. That comes up to eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars per child, where you said that between local, state, and federal, we're funding should be ten thousand nine hundred. Am I correct on that?
And that's close enough for hundred and-
That's correct, and, and if you take out the debt service and-
I took out a million dollars for the debt service instead of twenty-seven million, I ran the numbers on twenty-six.
Okay, and your number was, what was your number?
If you take twenty-six million dollars divided by twenty-two fifty on the students, that's eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars per child, and you said that the state, federal, and local was ten thousand nine hundred.
Take out the eight hundred and eighty thousand, and once you, once you take that number, there's capital projects, there's debt, there's things that cannot be included in that per pupil ratio.
Okay, I need to know what that stuff is.
That's answer to something you can do next year.
Yeah, well, this discussion right here is for prep for next year.
Well, I'm not talking the seventeen, I mean, eighteen, nineteen year, I'm talking about the nineteen twenty year.
The nineteen twenty.
To determine if they need to start charging a decent tuition charge.
Yeah, because these numbers-
But we can't solve that here, and it's irrelevant for now.
I'll tell you-
I'm not saying that the information is irrelevant, I'm saying that getting the information now is useless, 'cause, 'cause we're on a seven or eighteen, nineteen-
For right now, yes, but for prep for next year, we need to be educated on this.
I agree.
Because I'm coming up with one point four, almost one point five million dollar discrepancy between the numbers I'm hearing.
Right, these are twenty-seventeen numbers, this is not, so you gotta go back to the twenty-seventeen budget to get that number closer to that ten thousand nine oh one.
Well, the process needs to be looked at, but it's no, no need to spend more time on it now, because that's not gonna be in our budget.
Right.
That's all I'm saying, I gotta go to a funeral, I gotta get my mother's favor.
Okay, so we'll, uh-
All right, so let me just do a quick recap real quick, so I know where we're at.
Quick recap.
Uh, for May twenty-second, 'cause that's gonna be the first reading, uh-
Before we get there, we're gonna have to have another workshop.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask you.
So we need to set one, maybe one night next week.
Well, we've got, we've got a call meeting on Tuesday, uh, dealing with the Sunset VDU transfer, that'll be this coming Tuesday, that's the only thing I have on the agenda, we can have another, uh-
It's good, we'll have another discussion, almost for an hour or two.
Usually not.
Well, you have to announce that as well.
We've already done that.
I meant, you've announced the, the purpose of the special call meeting, it's that one thing, we're all about something else.
But that, well, we'll have a budget workshop, I think we can set a budget workshop at another time after that.
Oh, okay, not the same night.
No, on the same night, if you're on the same night, you'd have a call meeting, and then, after that meeting, after that meeting, we just go to the budget workshop.
As long as we announce it, that's all.
Can you recap Tuesday night instead of now, please?
I would, with pleasure, Councilman.
Please, don't interrupt.
What's that?
It won't take me two minutes. Overtime, overtime, I'm pulling out for half of overtime. The city attorney position will reduce about seventy-five thousand, I'm gonna look into the Commonwealth Attorney Lees, I'll give you all more information on that. Sheriff's Department, we're moving a hundred thousand for inmate housing, we'll do the maintenance of property and buildings, and at this point, we'll leave the school budget as it stands.
That is good, that's pretty good.
Right, I told you to be quick.
Mayor, that's, that's journey.
We want this door open here, no, it's probably closed. Probably need to adjourn the-
Hey, Mayor?
No, I'm sorry.